Good afternoon. I'd like to call the order, the Monday, July 7th Board of Supervisors regular meeting. We could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. And I know I'll be thinking about the families in Texas. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moment of silence. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
You have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion?
So that includes the addendum item for the Water and Sewer Authority?
Yes, because it's on the printed agenda.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Superintendent Grimsley is not present.
She thought she was going to be here, but then her schedule changed, but she did get me a couple of quick things, which I remember. One, regarding buses, I think you're aware that the school board elected to adopt a budget with the funds that the board conveyed that includes a bus. So this is in addition to the two that were funded earlier. However, they've come across some opportunity for potential used buses that might allow a two or three to one cost ratio of buses. So they're exploring that. They're out of Chesapeake, Virginia. They have a good relationship with vendors, and a vendor reached out and said that they're available. So those are pretty flatland buses with paved roads, so maybe there'll be an opportunity. So they're looking at that. The other, the SIFT Panther Team Four group got together and discussed, I guess triaged a little bit, the efforts from last year and unsuccessful efforts, as we're all aware, with advocacy for additional funding, and discussed with the lobbyists thoughts about next year, and came to the conclusion that it, next year would likely have the same result as this year if we were to try to pursue the same change. And the plan is to look at a way that can bring a number of school divisions together as a larger group that we're a part of, so that we can be part of a rising tide. And one of the J-LARK recommendations from the big study that was done a couple of years ago had to do with economies of scale for small school divisions. And that point, J-LARK suggested should be a long-range implementation strategy. And so Dr. Grimsley and the SIFT group discussed it with the lobbyists, are now pivoting to try to work with that with the smaller rural school group, I think it's called COSARS, and will be trying to gain advocacy for that larger constituency that's not necessarily tagged as being more money for Rappahannock. It's money for rural schools, small rural schools. And the goal is to shift that from a long-range implementation strategy to a short-term implementation strategy. And it's a relatively affordable strategy if you were to look at them side, it side by side with the other recommendations, at $80 million. So that's the plan going forward. We don't envision a need for a local lobbyist to help make that happen. So that was the update from Shannon.
No, I asked you about the bus, rural bus leeway that the governor put forward.
There was apparently a law last session that allows some leeway on the type of vehicle used for buses. And my very, I guess, tangential understanding of it is that things like vans might be able to be used where they couldn't be used before, but I'll defer to Dr. Grimsley to bring more information. I don't know if there are situations when small buses would make sense for us. A lot of times we have bigger buses covering larger areas, leading to long route times, but I think that is something that Dr. Grimsley should brief the board about.
One question I had, and it's probably for Shannon more than you, Gary, but I know you've been involved in some of the J-LARK-related communications. And what I heard you just say now is that there might be a movement afoot to address challenges stemming from downside economy of scale limitations on small school systems. And so I guess my question there is, you know, conceptually, I understand that small school systems have to absorb fixed overhead costs that may be in a larger school system with more headcount, be allocated across more students. But off the top of your head, in looking at it from a J-LARK perspective on this economies of scale initiative, what are the primary school cost drivers that are at the heart of a small rural school system economies of scale question?
I think it's the same cost driver that influences everything, and that's humans. And so for, the schools need to have a certain ratio of various positions, whether it's a principal, assistant principal, councilor, this or that. So you end up needing to have .3 principals, you know, 1.3 principals. You can't do that. And so that's, that is a much more profound effect on a tiny school than a school that needs 20.3 principals or something like that. So it's those rounding on those margins, I think, that make the biggest difference. If you looked at the J-LARK report, it's really telling, that section showed a graph where the smallest of the schools, of which we are one, pay 50% to 60% more than a typical size school. So they're looking at school divisions with under 2,000 students. And so it was a pretty smooth chart, surprisingly, where it really peaks as it heads to zero and then kind of drops down to the lowest point for the middle-sized schools. And then when you get to the really big schools, then it jumped up to maybe 5% or 10% premium. But the, those of us way on the left side of that graph with very few students are paying a huge premium.
And is the legislative or policy objective to correct the way these state mandated staffing requirements are implemented? Or is it to simply give rural schools some kind of, hey, you're at a disadvantage from an economies of scale perspective, so here's a half a million dollars to make a...
It's the latter. And J-LARK actually went through and analyzed it for every school division. And I think Rappahannock shows a potential extra million dollars. Some schools, maybe $3 million, just, they may not be as small as we are, but they have a lot, a bigger budget. So it's, you know, it's a mixture of those two things. We know that our, we're pretty disadvantaged from both that economies of scale and our proximity to Northern Virginia. We don't, we aren't going to drive change on the, on the cost to compete replacement, which is another recommendation that's long-term from J-LARK. But those big schools, Fairfax and those, they can drive that. If they are successful, then we'll benefit from that, too. But we can help with the small schools. And we think we should do it in a way that is not drawing attention to us, quite frankly, given the personalities that have been involved.
Right. And this is actually more specific because it goes to the problem, which is these job, jobs, positions, whatever, you need to have X number for this particular program. So I get it. Thanks for that explanation.
Anything else?
I don't have any questions, but just a comment I was going to share with Dr. Grimsley. And I know I'll forget if I don't, since I came prepared to share this, I'll forget it between now and next month. It was either last week or the week before, the headline in Falkir now was that Falkir County Public Schools had to replace 15 school buses. You know, I kind of, while my heart ached for them, I thought, been there, done there, you know, bought the T-shirt, glad that it was, you know, behind us and glad that we didn't have to buy 15 school buses. And then also, since our last meeting on this, the Director of Outreach at Laurel Ridge Community College is a colleague of mine, and she stopped by my office and asked what we were feeding the kids in Rappahannock County. Because she said that she had just met with one, obviously I can't share who, and she was blown away by this kid. And she just said, to understand the compliment that, from her, she works with 16 high schools across seven localities and roughly seven private schools across the same localities. And she said loud and clear, Falkir County kids are by far, she loves it when they walk in her office. So I just wanted to share that with Dr. Grimsley as well. So, you know, I know it's tough, but for our school employees to remember their why and for the parents in Rappahannock County to keep doing what they're doing because it's, it's getting the attention of someone at a local community college.
Thank you. You good?
I was hoping, I guess this is two months in a row we haven't had Dr. Grimsley join us. And I just think that's unfortunate because so much of the budget discussion centered around our schools. And I've, I don't want the momentum and the work on the school budget to lapse because there's no connecting points for the board and the schools. And in my opinion, Dr. Grimsley's present at our monthly meeting is the connection point for those two entities to exchange information. What I'm hearing in the community, and which I believe is, I don't want to call it an ill-founded idea, but I have trouble wrapping my head around how it's going to work, that somehow putting more children in our schools will work sort of, no matter at what cost, to get more kids in the school, which I am concerned is baking in more expenses on the school front, long-term, in terms of, I know that the line's always been, well, it doesn't increase overhead because there's still only but so many children in that classroom, but X number of books being bought, you know, seats being allocated on school buses. I'm concerned that as the numbers grow, if they're not county residents, that those numbers are being artificially inflated. And then I really would like us to get our head around the LCI number, which is being reevaluated for the biennium, I believe. We discussed that during the budget sessions, that we're waiting for the biennium iteration of the LCI. And the idea has been that if we, if we drive up the denominator or the numerator, maybe we'll stay the same and we can, we can maybe make some progress with our LCI. But I looked up all the numbers that go into the LCI a few weeks ago when we were doing all of our budget work, and knowing that it's sales tax and property value and all these other drivers in the LCI, and knowing for reasons beyond our control, for example, COVID has driven up some of those things astronomically, I would like to see some discussion of how this is actually going to work. Because I think to date it has been an idea, but I, I am very concerned that we are pursuing two different courses, and both of them spell trouble. That baking in more and more kids into the, I don't want to say baking in, we're not baking kids, but you know, introducing more and infusing more and more children into the school system will drive up costs. And also, at the same time, we're pursuing that in hopes that the LCI will come down. And that is, a lot of those numbers are just beyond our control. And I really think we need to have a frank discussion about what we're doing to that end.
I really appreciate you saying that because actually I came prepared today, recognizing we're precisely opposite the end of the fiscal year. In other words, we're at the beginning of a new one. I was, I had hoped to explain to Dr. Grimsley that my position right now, unless and until I see significant changes in the way the schools operate. And when she's back, hopefully next month, I can lay out specifically what I'm talking about based on input from several constituents, all who contacted me independently and basically validated the legitimacy of my lines of inquiry regarding duplicative positions and inefficiency resulting in high overhead costs. What I'm prepared to say right now, and again, I'll wait till next month, but to say it directly to Dr. Grimsley, unless and until there are significant changes in the way the school system is structured, I will not support any funding to the school system higher than that we transferred the school for fiscal year 2025, for starters. And so that's, that's my current commitment for fiscal year 2027. And I think that's an awfully good starting point because it says to the school system, to your excellent point, why are we going to wait until January or February to hash this out with, you know, people making impassioned pleas about how we're not supporting children or you can't hire this position, et cetera? Let's say it right now. I'm willing to say it right now that I will not support any school funding above fiscal year 2025 levels and maybe less than that until something changes.
Well, I'll be off the board next year. But, but, you know, I don't believe in leaving problems for other people. I'm not that person. And there is work to do on these numbers. And as, as a member of the Board of Supervisors and in the future as a private citizen, I think it's, we should all be paying attention to this LCI. And I don't think our attempts to manipulate it by introducing more and more students into the school system are going to bear fruit.
I had an interesting conversation with Dr. Grimsley this morning on the same topic. And I mean, I can relate insofar as I can remember exactly what she said, and we'll just, we can verify, but all similarly situated and not so similarly situated counties take students from other localities. There are a number that she mentioned don't require anything of the parents, they don't have to have property, they don't have to work in the county. So it's definitely something that people do. Also, apparently it's associated with about $100,000 in funding that we get. And so if we, and I don't know where that number is, like if we were to say, oh, well, we can only take 25 students, would we still get the same amount? I don't know. But it is associated with some funding. Whether those children are then also costing us more and offsetting that funding, I think is an interesting question. I've been getting similar questions from people about how, what was the school board decision that allows them to send kids to the, to the school? And so I think, and I can be wrong about this, but I think the school board's going to be talking about this next month. Like this very thing, like who, I think, and maybe fees associated. So I think it's, that's what I heard. But I did have an interesting conversation with Dr. Grimsley this morning about that.
I believe, I believe you're correct there. And I do know that, I know of students who are not being invited back because they maybe cost some resources. I know that that is looked at. I feel confident, based on conversations I've had with Dr. Grimsley, Chair, Chairman Mills, and others, that is, that's looked at. Like, at what point the funding they get, you know, is, the juice isn't worth the squeeze. So I feel confident in that.
So I did prepare a sensitivity analysis on the ADM. I think I put the results in a monthly report. But ultimately, if, all things, all other things being equal, which we know all the variables change all the time, you'd be in the 900-some-odd ADM range for it to move our LCI because our LCI is so entrenched above .8.
Right.
And for that same reason, I would strongly expect that your, the next LCI will be .8.
Yeah.
Unless major shifts have happened everywhere else, because it is a relative ranking amongst all schools.
Oh, it's also weighted in...
It is very complicated, but the denominator is everybody.
Right.
Right? So it's our share of all that. So I did share that with Dr. Grimsley as well to make sure she was aware and so that they, she and the school board could use it for the policy decisions.
Sounds good, Gary. I appreciate you running that down.
All right. At this time, we'll go into employee recognition.
Excellent.
We do this annually, and we do, what years do we cover?
Even fives, yeah.
So five, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, 35.
And so we include board members. So the first is Mr. Whitson, which I'll allow you to present.
35 years. I know. That's all yours. That's all.
Your hair is not gray.
He's had to sit up with me the entire time.
Cardiac arrest, you know, I mean, you guys really stuck together.
We've encountered times that you didn't know you were working.
Picture with Luke.
Hello, Luke.
Five years.
Five years.
I just finished 15 years at Wayne Case, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Thank you.
Don't go anywhere, Gary.
It's a great honor to serve this committee for five years.
As Vice Chair, you have the privilege of...
We should all stand up for these guys.
No, I agree with that.
Five years.
I just want to say, congratulations, Debbie.
Thank you.
Does it feel like more than five years?
Sometimes.
To those committees.
Thank you very much.
All right. And then I don't see a couple of 10 years, but Melissa Dawn Dotson, Treasurer's Office, 10 years, very dedicated employee. I know Bonnie's come to work with her a lot. And so I'm very appreciative for everything Dawn does. We'll make sure this gets to her. Dee, Dee Vask over in the Clerk's Office. I thought she'd been here longer than ten.
I did, too.
But 10 years. Thank you for Dee. And I, you know, don't know that she's going to do 15, so I think she's plotting and scheming to wrap up her time here. So congrats to Dee.
Heard something about 30.
Then the last of our 10 years is someone who's near and dear to me, Sergej Tamang. Sergej is one of the nicest humans anybody could ever meet, and anybody who lives down in the Amistoke area gets to see Sergej, and they go to the refuse and recycling center, as you see now, always a smile on his face, a fantastic human.
Everybody speaks so highly of him.
You do a great job, Sergej. Thanks.
Thank you. And last, I'm sorry, Marlena's not here. We have just a few instances where we don't have pins that go high enough, and they get a special pin. We did this for Peggy a couple of years ago. Marlena's been with the county for 35 years.
Wow.
So in the building office, obviously everything rolls through Marlena. We're grateful for all the work that she does down there. I wonder how many more years we'll get to have her, but thank you very much, Marlena.
We are moving into public comment. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment, please be recognized, come up and give us your name and district. And since the room is packed, no, I'm just kidding, we'll do five minutes.
Anne Yeoh in Piedmont, I'm not going to talk about taxes, I'm not going to talk about budgets, actually not going to, but I just wanted to say publicly that VDOT did a great job with our road, with all of the heavy rains, and it's still in great shape. And so if they'll just leave it like it is, it'll be great. But they actually did a terrific job, so kudos to VDOT.
What road is that?
Route 600, Woodford Road, between 608 and 681. I don't ever go down the other end. The other thing is to encourage people to come to the comprehensive plan sessions. So the last one was very well attended. The one before that, I think there were four people, five people, something like that. So it's, it's really important that people come and communicate to your constituents to please come to those meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, we...
Hi. Sheila Gressinger, Hampton District. I want to take this opportunity to talk a little bit about land use, because there's been a lot of coverage about land use and about property owners who have a lot of money, big parcels and everything, and so they have this wonderful advantage. But then I did some research, and there is an opportunity available for people who have a parcel of five acres that in, within our county, if it's dedicated to agriculture or horticulture, I looked it up, it's on our website, and that it requires work, duh, but it also requires planning and you do have accountability because you have to fill a report out with a treasurer at the end of every single year. You have to document everything you're doing to be able to get that tax break. But that is available for people. And I've never seen anything addressing that or educating, there are some people who might be able to take advantage of that opportunity here. I've never seen it in the newspaper, sorry. So, and then the other thing, I just want to take the opportunity to thank you all for everything you do. I don't always agree, but so what? I think it's really wonderful that we have such a degree of civility and working together and seeing issues and working through them. And I think that's just such a wonderful thing that we have in our board here, and I'm just so proud of you, and I thank you so much for doing that.
Thanks, Sheila.
Can we make that the last one? That's so positive.
Thank you.
Ron McAlister, Jackson District. Good afternoon. I'd like to make a few comments about the funding situation for Chester Gap's paid personnel on today's agenda. I've been following this subject since it began in January. I believe the Warren County Fire Chief made the right move for his department. I've also read the material that is included in today's agenda, which includes the correspondence between Mr. Curry and the Warren County Administrator. On March 21st, 2025, there were several correspondences back and forth concerning this issue. The final sentences in the last post written by Mr. Curry contained the following wording, quote, "I appreciate that you get hit with calls for comparison of how Chester Gap is handled compared with our, with your other station. I similarly get hit with questions of why Rappahannock County is funding the majority of the costs when most of their calls are in Warren County. We need to work together to make sure the system that is currently in place does not fracture, costing each of our citizens more in taxes." From this, from this week's paper over here, parentheses, "There are embedded inaccuracies in this letter." The letter he attached is the letter that I wrote for the paper on March 20th. I don't have a problem with him using the letter, but I do have a big problem with him profusing the letter with the words, "There are embedded inaccuracies in this letter." That is where he crossed the line. He used the phrase, but did not bother to expound on what the inaccuracies were. The phrase is commonly used in reviewing publications where the author purposely includes misinformation. I composed the letter using information taken from the county website. I explained exactly how I arrived at the conclusions. The letter is accurate. I've helped the citizens of Rappahannock deserve to know how their tax dollars are being spent. If Mr. Curry did not agree with what was written in the letter, he could have taken steps to publicly correct the alleged misinformation with a letter to the Rappahannock News, or at least he could have contacted me with his concerns. He did neither. By using the phrase "embedded inaccuracies," he is publicly inferring that I wrote a letter knowing that it contained misinformation. This is not true. His accusation is now part of the public record. I'm asking for an apology, and I'm also requesting... If Mr. Curry did not agree with what was written in the letter, he could have taken steps to publicly correct the alleged misinformation with a letter to the Rappahannock News or at least he could have contacted me with his concerns. He did neither. By using the phrase "embedded inaccuracies," he is publicly inferring that I wrote a letter knowing that it contained misinformation. This is not true. His accusation is now part of the public record. I'm asking for an apology and I'm also requesting that Mr. Curry publicly come forth and explain what part or parts of the letter he feels constitute embedded inaccuracies. Thank you for allowing me the time to bring us to your attention.
Thank you.
Ron, Chair, just a point of order. During public comment, we have very specific, we have very specific rules related to public comment directed at individual board members, and I would be curious why that rule would not extend to county staff even more so. I'm willing to take hits during public comment. It's not right and I think people should remain civil, but to have our county administrator called out publicly by a citizen is completely unnecessary, improper, and I would ask that U.S. Chair, next time something like that happens, intervene, and that's not criticism of you, it's just as I listen to the comments, I realize this was an ad hominem attack on our very, very skilled professional county administrator and I for one, for the record, will say I don't appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to go public comment?
Todd Brown, Chief of Chester Gap. First, I'd like to start off by thanking you guys for continued support of Chester Gap and the Rappahannock County Fire and Rescue countywide. I know we've been going through some problems with Warren County and the financing for the paid staff. Just to let you know how we got where we're at, you know, five years ago, when COVID hit, we lost all of our EMTs. We had one that was running and she decided that she could no longer run. So in able to keep service to the county, we implemented the paid staff. We started off with Rappahannock, Rappahannock started the funding to start with and we went to Warren County and asked for them to share, which they did, and we have done that for the past five years. The, the system has grown. We have, we went from a BLS unit to an ALS unit that's critical care. We have drugs, we have tools that nobody else in Rappahannock has, we have vents, we have ultrasound, we have an IV pump, we have critical care medics. I would like to see them used a little bit more in Rappahannock, but you know, that's not my call, I can't control that. We go where we're called. We just ran a call just last week over here at the new apartment buildings across middle Washington. So what we have implemented has worked very well. It has progressed very well, it has saved lives, it's saved money for what the county is investing in this program. I mean, you're looking at close to $500,000 to employ one person. We're employing two people that have the training, that have their critical care training, have fire training, that, you know, it's half of the price that, you know, and they're doing a great job. We've got a great bunch of people that's, that's doing the job, they're continuing to do the job. Regarding the, the issue with Warren County, we started asking for a meeting, Ms. Donna Hay, myself, Mr. Curry, we started asking for a meeting in January, actually December. I was told several times, yeah, we'll get together, we'll have a meeting, blah, 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 blah. I was also told in January that the funding would continue, that there would be no interruption in funding. They didn't think that they were going to be able to do an increase because of their, you know, their library problems and everything else they were having problems with. So we took it, you know, as their word that, you know, okay, we're going to continue this funding. I don't know if the rest of you know exactly the timeline of what went on, but myself, Mr. Curry and Ms. Donna Hay had met, Kevin Williams also was present on the, how the finances were going with Chester Gap. We were spending about $80,000 of our own money to keep this going. This was, you know, fundraised money, whatever EMS cost recovery money, that was coming out of our pocket. So we were trying to eliminate some of that by asking Warren County, you know, I had asked them several times, I'm trying to shorten this up, but I had asked, you know, several times, Warren County, what are you paying your part-time people? Because that's what Rappahannock did and thank you very much for doing that because those people deserved every dime. You know, they stepped up, y'all stepped up and paid the same as what you were paying the ALS 1,400 people. I thank you for that, employees thank you for that. But we asked Warren County, okay, well, what are you paying your, your part-time people? I got five different answers. So we, we never were really given the opportunity to sit down and to go through all this. We've asked for meetings time and time and time again. I've asked for it for months to sit down and have a meeting like we've done in the past with nothing. Then when Mr. Curry sent his email, which I have read probably 40 times and I don't see any malice in it, I don't see any, you know, slapping anybody in the face, I didn't, I didn't see any of that. And, you know, it, I'm, you know, I think the email was misinterpreted and I think Chief Bonzano turned around and misrepresented this email. Mr. Curry done a great job trying to advocate, you know, for Chester Gap, for the county and, you know, I, I don't, I don't understand why they decided to go down the road that they did. I, I can't, I can't answer that, but I do know for a fact that the, you know, the, the program has worked very well. It's saved lives. It's saved lives, yes, in Warren County and it's saved lives in Rappahannock. It has been a very good program. It still is, but we need to continue to fund that because we still do not have the volunteer base that we need to abstain the EMS side of Chester Gap part-to-part. We don't have it. We have aggressively tried, I don't know if anybody has seen the signs out and around the Chester Gap signs. We have, you know, we have really tried to recruit people. We have had a few new members, but they're new, they have no experience, so it takes time. And just because somebody joins don't mean they're going to get up at 3:00 in the morning and run a cop. I've got several people, I've got active members. After 8:00 at night, you can forget them. And I'm sorry, when, when, you know, when you're having a heart attack at 3:00 in the morning, you know, that, the time is against us. I mean, we need, we need to have that paid staff there and get them on the road. It's, you know, it's, time is not our friend, it's not our friend in the fire, it's not our friend in EMS. And, and like I say, I know with, you know, situation throughout the county, I mean, you know, I'm, I'm not a young fellow anymore and if you look at the, sorry, if you look at the, you know, the, everybody else around the county, you know, we don't have the, the young 20-year-olds stepping up saying, hey, I want to be a lieutenant, I want to be a captain, I want to be a firefighter, I want to, you know, I want to, I want to step into your shoes. COVID has changed the way we live and I'm, I'm not using that as an excuse, but it has. I mean, people don't volunteer like they used to. Businesses don't support volunteers like they used to. I've got a gentleman that works over in Winchester and they pretty much told him, hey, you don't show up to work, you don't have a job, I don't care what's on fire. And it, before COVID, it was, hey, you know, you need to get here at 12:00, that's fine. Not anymore. And the, you know, the sad part of this whole email scandal that I've called, and like I say, I've read this thing 20 times and, and in Mr. Curry's defense, I don't see anything wrong with it. I, I don't see the basis of, you know, it being misrepresented and it has been. As late as June 13th, you're, you're right on role examiner, they had a town hall meeting and Chief Bonzano, and I'm not by no means trying to, you know, slam anybody, but the truth's true, you know, it's, it's in the video. He spoke right up and said, Rappahannock County, we had the funds ready to fund this, Rappahannock County waited until the 13th hour to send this email demanding an increase. I didn't see that. And, you know, I, I'm, I'm kind of disappointed in how this has gone down the path.
You've started to be rude, I apologize, but we're still in public comment. Your agenda item is coming up. Are you able to stay for that agenda item or do we need to?
Yes, I'm.
You are?
Yeah, I'm.
If we can continue this, then I think that would be.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
That's okay, no, I, I understand the energy. Thank you. Anybody else on public comment? Yes, sir.
John Capielli, Hampton District. This evening, you're going to have a series of applications for tourist homes. There is a new application that's gone through recently nearby me and it's on a large piece of property. The other night, we had a half-hour fireworks display that did not get a permit issued in the newspaper as was approved, I think, last year. And I just had 10 thousand Malinois puppies 10 weeks ago and they went berserk. The same property has been receiving tractor-trailer loads of Chinese construction equipment that is being resold. There was new retaining walls built out on 211 by an unlicensed contractor, no permits, and hit the telephone lines and knocked them all out for all the houses. I have made several inquiries as to this and nothing. The second thing I didn't spend to speak on, but the public discourse, especially when it involves elected officials that you only get to speak to or around at public meetings is where you get to exercise your First Amendment right. Now, there is a line of civility where you should stop. However, it is the proper place to do it. If you don't want to have it happen, don't become a public person. Mr. Curry, I have been here many, many, many times. We've been on opposite sides of different issues. I think the man is fantastic, I think he's great and, but you can always count on him to follow the line of the rules. He knows what they are, I know what they are and it's part of the job. Now, not to call the man names or anybody, I, many a times I haven't gotten along with Ms. Smith here and at the same time, I've also complimented her in person and in the meetings. It's, it's a job and we're all trying to do what we do and express our side of the issue because it wouldn't be right to go to somebody's home and discuss this and to do it in the newspaper or something like that. This is the place, that is the purpose for public comment and the purpose behind the Constitution and your First Amendment right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Not seeing any hands in the courtroom, we have several people online. If anyone wishes to speak during public comment, please raise your Zoom hand. All right, I am not seeing any hands on Zoom. I'll go ahead and close public comment.
Can I just make one brief comment slash question, please, Madam Chairman? If I'm out of order, we can certainly discuss this later in the agenda, but what I just heard was not unlike something that I heard at the Planning Commission meeting the other night, our breakout session in Flint Hill, which is that somebody said, well, you know, why couldn't so-and-so do this or do that? And, and what we just heard were some, some complaints or concerns about things, but we all know, sitting at this table, that if you have a question or concern that the correct person to address your zoning issue to is Ms. Summers, our zoning administrator. And so I just wanted to make sure that it's abundantly apparent to the public that, that if you have questions or concerns about zoning or a complaint to file, which can be done anonymously, please do seek out Ms. Summers and speak to her because we rely on her expertise and often people may think something has been done or said, as was the case at Flint Hill the other night, but in fact, that any kind of application or pursuit of, of that use had never been submitted to the county. So the shortest point between, or the shortest way between two points is a straight line as usual and I appreciate everybody's.
Now, I think the.
Bear with me.
The groups, the folks that attended that one were very happy with the discussion, I think.
It was a lot.
It was a lot. I'm happy about that. All right, going into consent agenda, I need to pull the May 5th minutes. I found two edits that need to happen, but the rest of it I'm fine with.
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda with, except for pulling the minutes.
Except for the May 5th minutes?
Except for the May 5th, yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And I had sent, unfortunately, I read the minutes later than I should have, but I sent Mr. Curry an email that there were two edits that needed to be made. On page one, the spelling of Massey's Corner, Massey's was incorrect. And on page seven, at the bottom, Mr. Whitson had actually gotten a Miss Whitson, so I thought I would correct that for you.
That's all right. I've been dealing with it since grade school. Your mom gives you a weird name and nobody can keep it straight.
Well, it originally said Miss Smith and I made the correction to Whitson that I didn't correct.
A miss.
The times we're living in, nobody cares. On Massey's Corner, just out of curiosity, now that it's corrected, it does not have an apostrophe.
And this was even worse, I don't know how I read over it. It was Y apostrophe S, yeah.
A lot of people put in apostrophe, which it also is not.
I've done that before. A long time ago.
So if we can make a motion for those minutes.
I'll make a motion to adopt those minutes as corrected.
Do I have a second? I'll second, I did it, so.
Who was that?
I'm, I'm going to go ahead.
I'll let Debbie have it.
Thank you. Since I caused the problem or trouble.
Found the problem.
Corrected it.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, thank you. Quick, going into the appointment to Social Services, that one we need now or don't?
No, this is just an advance notice as required by our policy that you have two positions on your Social Services Board that will come up, one in September and one October. I'm supposed to make sure you're aware of them two months, two meetings in advance and so because they're close together, I bundled them here. Mr. Bebout submitted his application for reappointment today. I think the board can consider this and Ms. Melson might submit an application for reappointment, I don't know, but next meeting in intervening time, you can think about it and then be prepared to make an appointment to at least one of them and then the other could hold off even longer if you wanted to.
And if a board member wants to be on this, they have to fill one of the expirations?
Yes, yes, and I think you, I might have to look into whether we could align it with your annual appointments, I think, have to look at the state code.
Thank you. Because Mr. Goff is going to be on for a while. Thank you. Because Mr. Goff is going to be on for a while, would you all oppose moving Chester Gap ahead of the Assistant Commonwealth's Attorney position?
That's fine.
Somebody making a motion?
I'll make a motion to move G2 up to G1. Making G1, G2.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you for understanding. Come on up.
So just to by way preamble, I tried to be fairly verbose with the narrative on this section to make sure all those who read it knew the path that we traveled to get here and included the email that I had heard in Warren was so egregious, which ultimately said, I don't know if Chester Gap will sign an agreement for the same amount of money. And I also said that, you know, we can avoid reality, but we can't avoid the consequences of avoiding reality. Those two things together, I guess, were not received well by Warren County. But I wanted to be completely transparent and share it to the board and the public so you could draw your own conclusions from the correspondence back and forth. And I don't want to freeze Chief Brown there, but I do want to speak to citizens' comment. And my note of embedded inaccuracies was A, meant to say, I don't necessarily endorse the citizens' comment, and B, the statistics weren't accurate. The individual took all of the calls, which many calls have multiple fire companies on them. So one call might look like five in the system, whereas unique calls, there are only, I don't know, 1,300 or 1,400 calls. And so from there on, the statistics are a little off. It was not a slight. It's just stated the fact that there are some embedded inaccuracies. It's not the person's a bad person or they did things purposely wrong. It's just, when you read this information, it's not necessarily accurate. But people are concerned about it, and they have written the paper. And here's what they wrote.
And I agree. I mean, it's, you know, we do, we do, now, we do run about 60% in Warren County. But with what they are proposing, you know, they're going to take the money that is, was earmarked for the staffing at Chester Gap and put one paid paramedic, one more paid paramedic at Front Royal. I mean, they, I can share this with you, but it'd take me a minute. But I mean, I have a map that they provided. I didn't do it. They provided that shows all the pinpoints throughout Warren County, the fire calls that we responded to, the EMS calls we responded to. And yes, it is all over Warren County. I mean, we've gone as far as the Page County line. We've gone as far as almost in Frederick County. We've gone to the jail. You know, we've gone, like I say, all over Warren County. One of the other arguments, not really an argument, because we've never had a meeting, but one of the discussions that the chief had, Bonzano, was that, you know, a big percentage of the calls that Chester Gap runs EMS is in Front Royal. So he was saying that the call statistics showed that, you know, it would be more cost efficient for them to put somebody, one person in Front Royal, which I don't know what that one person is going to give them because if the engine crew and that person's driver is on a fire call, then they're still sitting there with one person that can't respond to anything. But I don't know, you know, I don't know what the future is going to bring as far as the call volume. I can't answer that. You know, my main concern is with the, you know, the Chester Gap area. You know, I'm, me as the chief, I'm not going to turn my back on anybody that's asking for help. I'm sorry. I can't, I can't do that. You know, I'm not just going to say, no, you're not going to respond. If this person's laying here in the road dying, yes, we're going to respond if we are called to do so. I can't do that. You know, I'm going to respond. It don't matter. I mean, we've responded in Falkir County also. So the citizens in Warren County that we provide first due area to, you know, it's kind of hard for us to say, oh, well, we're not going to respond because it's so close. I mean, you're only talking a mile and a half down the road. You know, Amosville is kind of in the same predicament with being so close. I mean, they're not as close to Culver as we are to Warren County. I mean, we literally have houses right across the street that are in Warren County. So it, you know, it's kind of a double edged sword. I mean, they, Warren County is continuing to pay operational expenses, which right now, it's still based on a percentage basis. That percentage can, that amount can never go below 39.5 according to the 2016 agreement that we signed in 2016. So right now, with the percentage of calls, I think the last was like 44,000 that we're receiving from Warren County. The other thing that kind of makes it another double edged sword is the cost recovery. We do bill for, if we go into Warren County in transport, we do bill for that transport. So that's revenue that comes back into Rappahannock, which hopefully, you know, they won't up and say, well, we're going to do away with that, too. But I wouldn't think they would. I would hope they wouldn't. But like I say, it's, you know, it's the curse of being on the county line. I mean, I, you know, it's a hard, it's a hard sell. It's a hard thing to do. And, you know, it makes it, you know, very, very hard. And, I mean, that's just like the, I mean, I couldn't even tell you how many phone calls I've received from citizens in Lakefront Royal, Hornet Woods, First Blue Ridge Mountain Estates, calling me going, what in the world is wrong with Rappahannock County? And I'm like, what are you talking about? And they said, well, they're, they're cutting y'all's, you know, they're causing you not to get this funding because of this email and all this stuff. And I'm like, no, no, no. So I have defended this board more than you would ever know. Because, you know, it's not, it wasn't right. Like I say, I really believe the email was blown out of proportion. It wasn't, you know, I don't see it. I mean, unless you sent a different email that I didn't get a copy of, the one that I read is nowhere near what has been, you know, presented to their board. It, yeah, it touches some points of it, but it's, it's a far cry from, we're not going to come across the county line, and we're not going to provide service. I didn't see that in there. You know, he, at the town hall meeting, and like I say, I encourage y'all to watch it, but at the town hall meeting, I mean, he pretty much interrupted the woman and said, hey, you know, Mr. Curry is the one that holds the first string. He's the one's in charge. And it's like, well, yeah, that's true to a point. But as the fire chief, you know, that's, that's my call to either go here or there. You know, I'm sorry. By law, that's my responsibility. I'm the one that's solely responsible for my first duty area. I'm the one that can be criminally charged and brought, you know, to court for negligence in my first duty area. Yes, I can call Mr. Curry and say, hey, you know, I've got a seat here in the cell with me, but, you know, hell, that'll go. But, you know, I mean, that's what I'm saying. You know, it was, in my eyes, it was kind of misrepresentation.
Chief, I don't know if it'll help or not. I sat down this morning and wrote kind of a timeline of occurrences of conversations and emails and all that stuff that I thought I would share with the board and the public since Warren County has been very vocal. I wanted to get some of the facts out there. But the first part of this agenda item is really to make sure that your funding is continued until October 1st, when Warren County has said at 7:00 in the morning, no more on October 1st, 2025. So I kind of thought we could do two things. One, talk through that. Hopefully, we're all in agreement that continuing that while Warren County is continuing, it makes sense. But I want to hear from everybody. And then I really do want to go on the record with the timeline that I've witnessed from the Pacific Ocean as well as in person that has just, I am so disappointed in what has taken place.
Well, and like I say, we, you know, we started this conversation in December.
Or November, 2024.
Yes. You know, I had conversations with, not with Bonzano, I tried, but his assistant. You know, we had had conversations and, you know, the information that I was given was, it's all, you know, we're going to leave it like it is. We're advocating to leave things in place, and we're not going to, we're not, we're not in a position right now to give a raise. But like I say, we had asked several times, what are you paying your part time people? Because we just thought it was fair that, you know, they pay the same as what they're paying their part time, our part time. Which, like I say, I never really got a straight answer. When I did meet with Assistant Chief Madico, he did provide it at that time, but that was like the end of May. I mean, you know, they were already in their budget cycle. Matter of fact, I met with him, let me see, like, May the 15th. And he, you know, he presented that to me. He was, their BLS rate was 1830 an hour, which they were paying us 15. Their ALS rate was 20, which they were paying us, I think, was 18. So it was a big difference from what they pay. When I met with him, of course, I sent y'all a copy of the email that he sent back out. But, you know, he was still saying that they were advocating to leave it in place with no rates. And then the very next night, I'm watching the video of one of the work meetings, and they told us, oh, no, we're not, we're not advocating to fund Chester Gap. I mean, I, my whole thing with it is, you know, they, I wish they would have been more upfront and sit down with us in December, January, and say, hey, we don't want to, we don't want to do this. You know, we want to take this revenue and put in Front Royal. And I understand that. I totally 100% support that because Front Royal Fire Department runs the entire county, and they need more staffing at that station, no doubt. I mean, like I say, I understand that. But, you know, there is a right way to go about doing things. And I, you know, I just didn't think this was, you know, the right way.
Does anybody have any questions that would help?
I just, since I'm a layperson and know very little about fire and rescue operations and how first duty areas work, my only practical question is, if Warren County is taking this very firm position on, and in your funding October 1st, can that be linked to a redrawing of your first duty area to exclude areas in Warren County? And the reason I ask, and I know I've said this to you before, when you and your team look out the window of Company 9, to the extent you have ventilators, and you have IV pumps, and you have all this extraordinary first responder ALS equipment, to me, you're such a valuable asset that when you look out the window, I'd much rather you look toward Rappahannock County so that we all can benefit from your expertise and your great leadership. And so going forward, I want, I want Company 9 to be part of our always improving system. And I want, for all the reasons you stated during public comment, for you to bring your resources and equipment and expertise to bear on a better Rappahannock County system. And so with all of that, my only question is, can you now just look toward Rappahannock County if Warren County has taken this position? And I know you've said that you, of course, are never going to turn away from someone who needs help. But I wonder if there isn't some way that the lines can be drawn so that you can serve the obvious folks who reside in Chester Gap across an imaginary line, but leave it at that? I'm just curious about that because I do hear citizen concerns about the resources and the fact that so many calls are run in Warren County. But if we're at this point, how can we be smart about how we integrate you more into our Rappahannock County system?
And it's, it's been, you know, I've, I've been doing this in Rappahannock for over 40 years. And it's always been a battle to make sure that the proper resources are used at the proper time and the proper place. That's been a problem. I mean, I've seen calls, serious calls, right here at Massey's Corner, and we had a, you know, a critical care flight medic working and never called. And so, I mean, that's what I'm saying. But that's, that's not, I can't control that. It happens. It's happened before. And, you know, until we figure out a way to fix the system, it's going to happen again. And there has been, you know, there has been several, you know, critical calls. They had a burn victim right down across the road here that the critical care medic should have been dis, and they're there, they're staffed. Actually, I think they needed to vent. They, you know, they, they called for the supervisor out of Falkir. And I think he was on the south end of their county. And Chester Gap would have been there in half of the time is they would have. But like I say, you know, this, this is something that I have fought, fought with and, you know, had discussions at, you know, the Chiefs Association, several different levels. And, you know, we looked like we're going to fix it, and we're right back again. It's, it's a matter of policies being written that I think would probably have to come more from the county level versus the association level. Warren County, and I hate to use them as an example, but I will, what they do is they will dispatch, if they have a volunteer station that's not staffed, they will dispatch that volunteer station. I'll give you an example. Say there's a serious accident between Flint Hill, Massey's Corner. They dispatch Flint Hill, they dispatch Washington. Okay? So neither one of them have called in that morning and said they are staffed. Staffed means you have personnel at the station. That does not mean you are sitting three miles away at home. You're not staffed. That means you are at the station. That's NFPA. Darren can tell you the same thing. That's, you know, being sitting at home is not staffed. You are available. But if there's a call, what should happen is those two departments, the first duty and second duty, need to be dispatched, and then the next duty staffed unit. Get them on the road. If you, and I've argued this numerous times, put them on the road. And if they're not needed, they'll go back in service. You know, if somebody from Flint Hill gets there, Washington gets there, and they go, hey, we don't need these people. We don't need the medic. Put them in service. But it's so much better to be placed in service than it is to be called 20 minutes into an incident and expect you to get there and make a positive outcome of that incident. It's just...
So between, I understand there's potential lost revenue if you don't run calls in Warren County because, and you didn't quantify it, but you mentioned the obvious revenue piece of this. That's, I think, some citizens who've been critical of your operations in Warren County have overlooked. There is revenue that comes directly to you through EMS cost recovery. If you set aside that revenue, and again, I don't, I don't know the number, but if you set aside that revenue, and then folks like Darren or Dispatch or whoever had the ability legally or otherwise to redraw your first duty area, could we not end up in a fairly efficient position where Rappahannock County is providing funding to your company to run calls in Rappahannock County to some extent?
I don't see any problem with that. And if, if Rappahannock, I don't want to go into too much because it hasn't happened. But if Rappahannock fully funds the... But if Rappahannock fully funds the staffing, that picture going into Warren County is gonna look different. Because I am not gonna, going to send the staff that is paid fully by Rappahannock to Front Royal Firehouse for a standby. I mean, I think that's, that's, that's just, you know, that's a waste of resources. We need to keep them in Chester Gap. I'm not a big fan of station fills. If there's an emergency call somewhere and you need us, call us. But to move the staffing from Chester Gap to Front Royal as a standby, you know, I, I don't, I'm not a fan of that. And like I say, I think that's one thing that, you know, me as an operational chief, that I would definitely address, you know, if Rappahannock fully funds the staffing. Because I, I don't agree with, with doing that.
My view is Warren County can't have it both ways is where I'm getting at. Warren County cannot have it both ways.
Right, exactly.
It's not the way it works.
Yes.
You don't cut it off and then still ask for favors.
I agree a hundred percent. I mean, I'm a, I'm a Rappahannock taxpayer. So, you know, I, I agree a hundred percent. Like I say, it, it's kind of a double-edged sword, but, you know, there are some, some calls that they dispatch things on that, you know, we probably will not do in the future. You know, if they're not contributing towards those staff, I mean, how can I justify taking the two staff people from, that are being fully funded by Rappahannock and have them respond to somewhere in Front Royal for a tree in a row? You know, that's, that, that's just not gonna happen. I mean, if we have volunteer, that volunteers there and they wanna respond to the tree in the roadway, then have at it. But the staff will not do that. I mean, I, I can't, I can't justify, you know, sending, taking people out of the, the area and taking them to a tree in a row. I, I just, I don't, I don't agree with that. And I've never, I've never liked that policy. I think Warren County is probably one of the only counties around that dispatch fire and rescue to a random tree in a row. Now, if it's, if it's a natural, natural disaster, if we've had a, a, one of the big winds came through, the duration come through, or hurricane, that, you know, it's a tree in a row that is affecting public safety, that's something different. But, I mean, we were dispatched just the other day. No storm, no thunderstorm, nothing, just a random tree that had fallen in the road on Harmony Hollow. We get up there, of course, I went, I made the staff stay back. They did not respond. Me and another volunteer went, got there, large tree. I said, you need to notify VDOT. This is their job. We cut the tree out of the road to get one lane open because of the camp that was going on at the four eight center. We did do that. We no sooner and put our equipment away and turned around, here comes VDOT. So, you know, you, you're tying up valuable resources for a tree in a row that VDOT is getting paid to remove. So it, it's, you know, Rappahannock don't do it, that I know of. I don't think we have a tree in a row policy anymore. I don't think we do.
Chief Brown, I'm gonna interrupt and make a motion that we support the EMS paid provider funding for the first three months of FY twenty twenty six and get this-
I'll second your motion.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
That amount doesn't exceed the budgeted amount for the year, of course.
We, but, no, this, so this basically would match what Warren County has agreed to extend for three months as a transition period. We, you have an agreement through the end of last fiscal year, June thirtieth, and so this would enable it to extend.
So, so my question is, I, I hear, you know, the, the, the kind of idea for escalation, you know, to draw back and redraw our lines and concentrate on Rappahannock County. And I do understand that sentiment. I, I don't wanna be short-sighted because you all are still getting operational funding from Warren County. And there will be many, many instances, I'm sure, where we will rely on each other for mutual aid. And we sorely need those skills from time to time. And I'm just, I'm so disheartened thinking about how hard the majority of this board worked in twenty twenty and points beyond to get a workable solution in place for Chester Gap. And I wonder if now that the sort of heightened, we call them discussions, right, of the budget are over, that, that maybe is there not an opportunity for a new conversation with Warren County? Because I, I really think that this has been a mutually beneficial relationship and, and perhaps to make numbers add up.
As Chief said, we've been asking since November to have a conversation.
Can I say something?
Yeah, and I believe me, I'm, I'm an eternal optimist, so you can tell Christine, hey, been there, done that, no one hurt, no one wounded.
And like I say, I'm in no means trying to degrade Warren County Fire and Rescue by no means. Front Royal Fire Department, whether it be the volunteers or the paid staff, they are second due to Chester Gap. They do respond all the way to Flynn Hill. We had the fire there, electrical fire, I can't say the name, but it was close to, close to Wakefield. We had three units from Warren County. So the, the working relationship as far as operational, I don't think would, would change. I, I, I mean, I would hope not. I, I wouldn't think that, I would think that they would be more professional than that, if that's the right term. But, I, I, like I say, I'm, I'm, I'm on the fence. I'm, I'm very, I'm disappointed that we could not sit down and meet. I mean, I'm, I'm the type of person, if I've got a, if I've got a problem, I'm gonna come and I'll sit down at the table with you and we will discuss it and we will work the problem out. And once we're done, we'll walk out of, out of the room. But that never happened with this, this whole deal. And I'm, I'm really, I'm disheartened by it. You know, we, we've had such a good working relationship with Warren County for many years. I mean, we, we've worked hand in hand with Front Royal Fire Department for, like I said, I've been there for forty years. You know, even before their staffing has multiplied like it has, I mean, with the volunteers. So, you know, I don't think, I mean, yes, I understand what Mr. Whitson is saying, but they're going through a process right now. They're, they have hired a consultant to do a study on their fire and rescue, which I think they said that was gonna be out in November. They did come to our station. They looked at our equipment. They looked at the area that we run. So they did include us in the study. What that's gonna look like, I have no idea. They may very well say, hey, they're in Rappahannock, they need to stay in Rappahannock and you need to build another station at the bottom of, I, I mean, I have no clue.
Well, studies are funny, because now that they paid for a study, but by the time the results come to fruition, you know, the results come out, it'll be moot. Because y'all are no longer part of the solution.
Right, so, but like I say, I can't answer that, so.
We tried to get an extension until after the study came out. It seemed to make sense to me.
I just, I wouldn't think it would, I, I wouldn't think that, I mean, to me, I wouldn't think that would happen. But, I mean, like I say, I understand what Mr. Whitson's saying, but I do agree with you. I mean, we need, we don't need to, you know, cut our nose off, spike our face, pretty much.
We need to find a velvet hammer. That's what we need.
I mean, they, they need-
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Brown. So, any direction on the path forward, it would be helpful for-
I would personally, and Chief Brown and I talked about this over the weekend, like to see if we could have a Public Safety Committee meeting. Assume Mr. Whitson, that we can get his leadership in a room with whomever you see fit for Public Safety and just have a conversation of what forward looks like.
And then can we have this as a standing agenda item until it's resolved?
Well, really, when you get one more meeting, ultimately, as is the case with this board, the Warren County Board will be changing. And so that just adds complexities into, into the situation. The correspondence with Mr. Daley that you, you read, he suggests was very, very tight budget for them. And, and there were a lot of ors rather than ands. And in this case, it was Front Royal instead of. And so maybe that picture changes in the future with the study or otherwise. And so some of these decisions that, that our community needs to make, you know, they might only have to plug six months or, or, you know, a year before the entire situation's analyzed and, and things kind of come back to where they were.
Can I say one more thing? I know you've already, but can I say this? I, I just wanna add that, you know, we have invested a lot in the, the program. The drug program that we've done, Rappahannock's invested in it, we've invested in it. We've come a long way. And, you know, October first will be here before we know it. And I, I just don't wanna, I don't, I wouldn't, I really don't wanna see a lapse in coverage for the citizens. You know, every, everything that I have done from twenty twenty to today has not been for Chester Gap Fire Department. It has been for the citizens of Rappahannock County. And, you know, it has, you know, we, we've made such leaps and bounds and such a success that, you know, I really would hate to see this, you know, just go off to the wayside because, you know, the, the citizens usually don't suffer. There, there's, they're building houses in Chester Gap left and right. I mean, there, I, I've never seen such growth over in the past, you know, six months. They're, they're building everywhere. So it's, it, it is a need. And I, I hope, you know, I, I know that, that the, the program still saves money. I mean, even if, if the county funds it one hundred percent, it's still cheaper than the, the, the other. I, I mean, if, if you were to fund full-time staffing, I mean, you're, you're looking at half a million dollars. And that's just a start. That's not counting gear, benefits. I mean, it's, it's a lot.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all very much.
Bear with me. I wanna go through this timeline just so we have it on record.
Did we vote on the-
You, you did vote on the, getting them the ninety days.
Thank you for everything, Chief Brown.
And so you need me to do anything on-
We need to figure out when the meeting's gonna be and try to get it-
We just, there's a lot of players, so yeah, offline. Public Safety Committee and Chester Gap folks can be there. And as, as Chief said, in twenty nineteen, Chester Gap was a BLS company. Flynn Hill was a BLS company. Many times, Front Royal was coming to render ALS care on that end of the county. And so today you have Chester Gap as an ALS company with critical care. You have Flynn Hill's an ALS company. And the community has upgraded significantly since those days. And having providers that are very proximal to an issue, be able to get there quickly, which, you know, is so important.
So I'm just gonna go through this and try to keep my sarcasm out of it, which I have a way of being sarcastic every now and then. So in late twenty twenty four, Gary worked with Chester Gap and assisted in creating an accurate and detailed budget document, which clearly showed, and Bonnie, that clearly showed that Chester Gap, Chester Gap was allocating all of its funds to ensure the staffing was there to run the calls to save lives. But they didn't have additional resources for emergency repairs that wouldn't have been covered by operational expenses or capital expenses. Gary reached out to Ed, specifically, I know this because it was an email, on January seventh to begin the MOU discussions. Ed said to Gary, I'm gonna need to see a budget before my board's even gonna consider giving any additional funding. Then it sounds like Chief talked to Jerry, you know, around March twenty first. On, well, actually, I don't remember the date he said. March twenty first was the infamous email that went out that got so much attention in the news in Warren County. On April twenty fourth, the Royal Examiner reported the potential shift in support of the agreement, which is a reminder, has been going on for five years. And Chief Bonzano was quoted as saying, they are professionals. If we need help and they can respond, they will. I think that sets expectations for their citizens that I don't think are exactly accurate. And then James Bonzano, the chief, told the board that Warren could reallocate funds currently paid to Chester Gap and instead hire three full-time advanced life support staff members to be stationed at Fire Station One, which is their busiest hub in the county. This is about getting more value and ensuring better response, was his quote. If we staff in-house, I can guarantee oversight, safety and accountability and will actually gain ALS coverage across more of the county, end quote. I received a message from, and spoke with Chief Brown while I was on my vacation. And because I couldn't be there, Darren and Gary met with Chief Brown and I think his leadership. On the twenty eighth, that's when you met with the leadership. On May third, Royal Examiner met with Chester Gap leadership. Chief Brown stated that they had tried to meet with Warren as they normally did, but they didn't even receive a return call. They were totally caught off guard. And that was Chief Brown's quote. June tenth, Warren had a public hearing. And then on June twelfth, an email was received by Chester Gap stating that the recommendation would be to discontinue the program as of October first at oh seven hundred. June thirteenth, Warren County Town Hall, this was after that email had gone out. Leadership alluded to an email received in the thirteenth hour, which I just had to look up exactly what that means. And it means like at the absolute latest time. Gary's email, as I said, went out March twenty first. This is being quoted as of June thirteenth. In my mind, that is not the thirteenth hour, but a good excuse to continue with the progress of what they were trying to do. Again, no conversation was allowed to happen with Chester Gap leadership or Rappahannock. We tried many times. An email which is posted on board docs, you can all read. So it's not like Mr. Curry or anybody's trying to hide what truly happened. And let's see, in my understanding, based on speaking to experts in the field, using a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which is, I think, close to what Warren County provides in this program, to hire three additional paramedics to cover twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a week, is a bit of, in my mind, my quote, smoke and mirrors. To make an ALS crew, by the way, you need a paramedic and an EMT and a driver. Or the driver can be an EMT. So now you need six people. And there have been multiple occasions, I have heard, that Company One, getting dispatched for fire, totally get it, everybody goes. So if they don't keep somebody back, they don't have that driver to take that paramedic to the emergency cause should they get one. So this whole thirteenth hour-
You mean Front Royal Company One?
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you. I appreciate that. The response from Warren leadership was that Chester Gap had volunteers to run fire calls and that they just planned to do dual dispatch. When a citizen asked them during this town hall, what are they gonna do? They don't have EMS people. And it was just basically, they have volunteer firefighters and we'll do dual dispatch. June twenty fourth, Supervisor and Colors, Supervisor Colors and I sent a joint letter to the board requesting an end date of January one. Again, their survey, their study is gonna be done in November. Let's wait, see what comes out of that and start this in January. Made sense to us. They voted that night to move forward with what Chief Bonzano had recommended. In my mind, it's very sad that an agreement that's been successful, I think everybody believes is successful. It just may not be the long-term goal of some. After five years, we couldn't get a meeting. It was avoided and Chief Brown would talk to one leader and get one message and talk to another leader and get a different message. So the whole thing, I, I'm just very disappointed in the way this has come out, come about. I wanna thank Supervisor Colors. I think she got beat up because of her support of some other things in Warren County. And so when it came to trying to support the citizens in her district, she ran into a pretty big wall. she ran into a pretty big wall. And she has, I know, been working hard to try to make sure that her citizens are cared for. And of course, Chief Brown, I mean, he's been doing all of this for free. There's no, I don't know any other county that has somebody scheduling paramedics, hiring paramedics, and running calls themselves and not charging the county for any of that work. So I just want to thank him and his crew up on Chester Gap. And I don't want there to be misunderstanding of how an email that was sent in March caused this problem. That's a bunch of bunk.
I'm glad you cleaned that up because this like, yeah, I mean, the timeline is clear and you articulated it so well. So I thank you for all your help along the way.
All right. I apologize that this took as long as it did, but it's so very important. And I hope that Mr. Whitson will be able to get the Public Safety Committee together.
Sure, so Gary, you and I can work on that, right?
Yeah, we'll reach out to the members and find out when they can be available. There's a lot of other things on the calendar, so we'll find a date that works.
All right, now we go into Assistant Commonwealth Attorney position. And this we talked about last month, but asked to be tabled for further education, I think.
Can we hear you, Art? Can we see something?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, excellent. Want to make sure you were in online. I do want to note that county administration staff has supplemented the information in this agenda item with the understanding we learned from the Executive Secretary of the Comp Board. And that's in the last paragraph that you can see. The that individual identified two code sections that lays out a a process through which a county could, for lack of a better word, dispute the allocations provided by the Comp Board. And those times have run. And so unless a locality objects within 30 days of notice of fixed salaries, which in this case didn't come, it was a very odd process with the way the budget was adopted. We're told that you essentially have to fund a position and the benefits that are given to typical employees. So the benefit part, like many other things we hear from the state are unfunded requirements. But I try, my perspective has been that if you can hire a prosecutor, a lawyer who's gone through law school for $28,000 a year, you're doing something right. And so that's been my perspective all along.
Well, I I would agree. And just to keep this moving along, I will move to authorize the creation of an Assistant Commonwealth Attorney Commonwealth Attorney One position and approve the provided FY 2026 supplemental appropriation necessary to fully fund the position at the entry level salary. And I just want to agree with what Mr. Curry just said, that I think that folks are, at least what I've heard, is overwhelmingly supportive of prosecuting crimes in the county. And that it's to the office that this is attaching. And so it is a political office, but this is this is a step in the right direction, given the facts that Mr. Goff has explained that, you know, going through a criminal docket is not what it used to be 20, 30 years ago with, you know, 20 pages. It's now 40 to 60. So I think this is a step in the right direction, at least from the Comp Board recognizing the need.
I have a hard time voting for anything that wasn't part of the budget, especially in light of what we just did, this item, and what we're getting ready to discuss next. It's a lot of spending, none of it budgeted. I said that last time. That being said, I can understand why people feel that it's important. If you all think it's important, I'll vote for it. But we have a lot of money we need to find, and this is not getting any better. It's getting it's getting actually much worse. And the the items that are at our disposal to reconcile these differences are are not palatable.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? We can go into discussion. I thank you for your comments, Ms. Smith.
I'll second it for purposes of discussion.
I did have a an Art, it's important that you jump in if I don't get this right. But I talked not too long ago with Art and and kind of came away from that conversation with what I thought was a different understanding of how this all came to pass and what we're required to do. And I'm not even assuming, and Art will correct me if I'm wrong, assuming I am correct. I don't know that any board action is required because this position at the the entry level Comp Board funding is apparently mandated, is what I understood from my conversation with Art. So I don't I don't know that there's anything for us to vote on other than some additional funding for the position. And if that's the case, what I would prefer to miss miss point is that we let the Comp Board do what the Comp Board's going to do. Art can test the market for an Assistant Commonwealth Attorney at whatever the Comp Board has mandated shall be paid for this position that they have mandated must exist. And if we get to a point where there's actually a candidate that Art wants to hire, then at that time, we can talk about some additional funding. I think we're, and again, Art, I urge you to to correct me if and where I'm wrong. But it seems like by us taking a vote on funding now puts the cart before the horse and also disregards the fact that this is not a Board, Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors decision on this position. The position is one that the Comp Board has said that we must integrate into our Commonwealth Attorney Office. So I want to make sure all of that, before any vote is taken today, is crystal clear for our citizens and for each member of the board to make sure that we know what we're voting on. Because it's still not clear to me after talking with you recently, Art.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. It's it's my understanding of the of the constitutional officer system that the Comp Board makes the decisions about assistance for those constitutional officers based on their understanding of the data and what other other evidence that they may consider. And then according to Mr. Sosio, then that when they make that decision, that brings with it accounting a local obligation to fund those parts of the, I would call, fringe benefits that are not funded or reimbursed by the Compensation Board. It's not unusual, I think, in any Compensation Board position in any constitutional office that there is a local component that is unreimbursed. So to your point about what's going to, what type of applicant will be applying, at this advertised salary, I would expect it to be someone who is a green law, someone who has no or little experience in the criminal justice. Because my, I would say, non-scientific survey of the local Commonwealth Attorney's Offices, most of the assistants are making far more and are much more heavily supplemented by the local government. That being said, I and I appreciate your idea that perhaps we could look at the funding once I've seen what has come in. I would like like to actually reverse course with you, Mr. Whitson, and say that I believe it's possible that I can get a a call today sooner rather than later. Maybe that's optimism speaking. And that if the the person that I had hoped would apply, if I was able to to get them to concede a significant salary, I guess, reduction on their own personal part, that they may come aboard. I don't know that, though. That being said, I would ask the Board to support this. I think it is a great, unique for for my office and and the benefits to the residents of Rappahannock will be profound in not only short term, but in the long term as well. Will be joining the rest of the state in having all the Commonwealth Attorney's Offices with assistance to prosecute these cases. It's it's a, remember, and there's no end to crime, and it's going to keep on. And a lot of it, as all of the board members have very wisely noted, a lot of it comes from outside the county. And because of the growth outside of the county, we can expect that our dockets will continue to grow, not only in number, but in, I would call it, complexity or severity of crime. So all that being said, I do think now is the time to go ahead. If a if a some Dr. Einstein comes up and says, I'll do it for this, I will come to you and say that. And we can have this discussion again. Because initially, that was what I had brought before county administration, was a proposal that I'd be able to advertise at a higher salary range than what had what actually came to be approved by the Compensation Board. And I apologize for any any, I guess, misunderstanding about it. I didn't intend that. And I appreciate the support I've received from the public and and that I think has been communicated to at least some of the members of the Board. So with that said, I hope that explains it. I would ask for a a vote today.
I guess my my question that is, I'm still not clear on, I'm not trying to be, I feel like I've said this a bunch today, including to Mr. Curry, I'm not trying to be a jerk just to be a jerk. But I I'm just trying to understand. So when I communicate to the people I represent, including you, Art, you're a constituent, i- am I correct if I say that we don't have any choice because the Comp Board has mandated that this position be added to our?
Oh, yes, yes, that 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 part is correct. The additional money is purely discretionary. But the 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 you are absolutely correct. And as I think Mr. Sosio's email to Bonnie explained, that there's a statutory order that requires that these Comp Board positions be treated the same as any other county employee, which entails the 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 employee being able to participate in the VRS program and the health insurance program and all the other programs and benefits that any other employee of Rappahannock County would would do so. The trouble is that they only reimburse about, I don't know, $8,000, $7,000.
10%.
Of what that also costs for a county is, which renders it a, I guess, I call it state pass down or mandate, however you like to refer to it, with regard to the base salary position. Anything else that I would ask for, of course, would be absolutely and completely, you know, discretionary at the at the Board level. But you're correct, it is a mandate and there's there's really, there's nothing that the Board could do about it at this point. And I will point out as well that I was unaware of any objection period until after our last meeting, when I started to look into the law. And then I got Mr. Sosio's email and said, well, you know, that time has passed. But at any rate, that I I think you're correct in what you told your constituents is, you don't have, it's not a discretionary expenditure at this point because the Comp Board has created the position and they have not funded it. So and I wish that I had known that it's going to happen. But I've applied for for the last, what, 12 years, every single year, and I've always been turned down. So I vote that Ms. Jewel and I had a big juggle when she opened her her email and saw that we'd actually done it this year.
Are are?
Yeah, I was dumbfounded and but also greatly appreciative.
Are there other localities who are seeing this position added to their Commonwealth Attorney's Office? Is this a sort of a sweeping Comp Board initiative? Kind of like we saw in supplemental income for small locality sheriffs? Is this is this analogous to that? I don't know if Bonnie has any.
I would say, I would say something like that because the the association has lobby, the the General Assembly and the also has, I don't know if she can lobby the Comp Board, but has promoted the idea that all the small counties be brought into alignment and that 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 there be no single prosecutor's offices anymore. And there was a similar push back in the mid 90s when there was a push to get rid of part-time Commonwealth Attorneys down at a statewide level. And many of my predecessors, well, my predecessor, Mr. Luth, took advantage of that. It was his election at the time as a part-time Commonwealth Attorney that he gave up his private practice and go full-time. Mr. Hennessy and Page did the same thing. Several other of the smaller counties in our general region followed suit. And that ensured that there was a a full-time prosecutor free from conflicts, intermingling conflicts with private clients. So the the wisdom of it is apparent. The wisdom of this, I think, is apparent in that we need to effectively prosecute these cases. And and with one person in the office, especially with the growing complexity of the criminal law, it is, I think, essential for the well-being of of the people who benefit from prosecutions, as much as that sounds strange, but people who receive justice for our efforts. It will be well, well served going forward. And it is sort of a pass down, a mandate from the state, but I submit rather small in comparison to a lot of other things for the benefit that that will result.
So directly to your question, Mr. Whitson, the county, the staff cannot spend money unless it's appropriated. And the revenue from the Commonwealth for this position has not been appropriated. And the balance that would have to be spent to cover the mandatory benefits that are not paid for by the Commonwealth have not been appropriated. The appropriation resolution included in the packet would do that by adding $117,323 to the Commonwealth Attorney's Budget, recognizing the revenue from the state, and then recognizing essentially a transfer of $28,103 from your board contingency.
So moving forward next year, we will have an additional, is it $33,000?
Well, $28,103, there could.
The use of the fund balance, though, $3,400, is that?
That's, but in within the, it's 28, right?
Yeah, the $3,400 from the use of the fund balance won't be there because that is paying for one-time furniture equipment.
Okay.
In fiscal '26.
So the $28,103 is strictly the position?
Well, right, and so next year's health insurance rates, next year's VRS rate, all those things are potential variables, and it might be a little bit different. But if the General Assembly provides a 3% raise, they would give a 3% bump to the $77,000 revenue. Now, regarding discretionary funding, the benefits, as we've come to understand, are mandated by the state, they're not discretionary.
Hey, Art, how many?
Boards boards can supplement salaries and pay more than the Comp Board provides, which is done for for Art, for example, so it can do for other. But this does not assume that.
And I mean, I'm just trying to equip myself for 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 blowback. I'll get a quickie mart on Saturday or Sunday. So I, yeah, you know, that's serious stuff. Do you know off the top of your head, and then I'd really like to hear from Ms. Comer, because I, if I recall correctly, she was the one who led us down the path of delaying a decision till today. Do you know within the Commonwealth of Virginia how many single prosecutor Commonwealth Attorney Offices remain? Were we were we part a part of a tiny, tiny club? Were we the exception? Or is this still the rule for small population localities?
It's my understanding that with with my office coming in, that there won't be any more single prosecutor offices, except for Bath, perhaps, and Alagani. I mean, Bath and Hyatt. That, no, we're one of the last outliers. I think last year, there were five of us left. I think either five or seven, maybe it was seven. And a few got funded to last budget, last year's budget with brand-new assistance. So we're in a very. So, we're in a very, very small club.
Good. Thanks.
Hopefully to be the last of the, oh, you kids.
We're still in the last of the club with the county attorney and the Commonwealth attorney being a combined office, right?
We are, yeah, that's another, another unique distinction of Rapid County, is you get two for one.
Which is a really good lead-in to a couple of things that I wanted to say. So first, Mr. Goff, I, I want to make sure that, to be clear, that my remarks and questions have, they are not an indicator that I think you, you or anyone in your office are doing a poor job. I think just the opposite. You know, I, I just have to ask these questions because I'm having a hard time understanding a couple of things. So first, I agree with Supervisor Smith 100%. The majority of my angst about this is that we were approached the night we were voting on our budget. Like, we were, it, we had absolutely no time to, I feel, react and cast well-informed votes. So, that, that is definitely why I pump the brakes. Now, reading this, I, I'm just going to have to say, somebody's going to have to explain it to me like I'm in fifth grade, because I see, I keep, I keep hearing the phrase, "We have to pay, we have to provide the benefits just as we provide the benefits for everyone else, all other county employees." I understand that we have to provide the same benefits. What I don't understand is you can't draw blood from a turnip. So, how, like, if, if we as a board, say we don't have, it's not in our budget, which it wasn't in our budget because we voted on our budget the night we found out about it, I'm having a hard time understanding how we're forced to do it now. And then the next thing I'm having a hard time understanding is that the 30-day notice, who's response, who is supposed to notify us of that? Because again, I'll repeat, we found, we only learned of this a month ago. So, those are a little, those are the things causing my angst and, you know, a little frustration. Nothing, nothing means that I don't think it's needed, nothing means I think anyone is doing a poor job, none of that. I'm just worried, I'm worried about process here. And then, again, I say this gently, but directly, the other little bit of angst that I had was I didn't, I didn't feel like I had anywhere to go. My county attorney was, is the Commonwealth attorney. So, with all due respect, Art, if I ask you anything as a county attorney on this subject, it directly impacts the Commonwealth attorneys. You know, you see there was a slight conflict. So, again, I say all of that respectfully and gently, I'm just sharing with, with all of you the, the angst that I experienced over the last month in trying to figure out where I stood on this. Again, if it's mandated and I don't have much of a choice, I, you know, there it is. However, I, I have gone, I've, I'm having a hard time peeling all these layers back.
Well, I, your question is compound, I'll try to do it as you ask. The, the, the first issue is the General Assembly in its appropriations makes these decisions. This is part of the general appropriation bill. The comp board is the agency that is responsible for, I guess, administering, well, these, these, the, the constitutional officers part of what's appropriated by the General Assembly. So, in that sense, yeah, we don't have any choice about it. The General Assembly voted this money and the comp board made the decision about where it was to be spent, where it was needed. As to the, the point of who was supposed to notify you, you know, I don't know the answer to that. The statute doesn't say. And other than to say that the county administration will be notified of when this funding is made available. And perhaps you don't recall, but I believe it was at the May meeting when I informed some of the board, I know Madam Chair was not present, but the other board members that, hey, look, this is great news. I just found out, me and Bonnie found out at the same time, that the money had been appropriated for the assistance position in my office. I didn't realize that there was a 30-day appeal period until after the June meeting, when I opened up the books and started looking at, well, what, what can I do here if the board decided not to vote to make this appropriation? I was thinking about what to do. Second, when you reached out to me with an email, I did respond to you with a time, a timeframe within several days, which I would be glad to answer any questions that you may have. As to inherent conflict, if I thought I couldn't be honest with my client, I would certainly ask for someone else to make the call. I didn't feel that in this case. And up until, you know, the, the June meeting, I didn't recognize that there would be any kind of a pushback about this. I thought it was like great news, like somebody just gave us a free shot to the paper. So, I couldn't have anticipated what has come to pass. But certainly, if there is question about any of this sort of thing, even though I am the Commonwealth attorney and the county attorney, I could certainly separate that in my mind. And if I recognized that there was indeed a conflict of interest, I would have to ask another county attorney to look at it. But in this case, there isn't one because, as Mr. Whitson pointed, there's not much we can do about this. This is something Richmond has dictated from above. The General Assembly has actually appropriated this money. And there are other statutes, look for detail, in Ms. Sosio's several emails, or two emails, that require the localities to, to make these fringe benefits expenses. I just am sorry that anybody's taken aback, but, you know, here again, I didn't know it was done. Until May, well, but May, I don't know, I don't even think it was May 1st, well, whatever, there was a May meeting, and I remember going around saying, and I remember talking to you and to Ms. Smith, out of, hey, this is good news. I know I've told Mr. Arnie and Mr. Whitson, but Ms. Donahue was, was not present physically. So, that's when I found out about it, was early May. And I had no idea that there would be an issue until June. And that's when I started looking at the books. And I can't even say it was close to the meeting, I can say it was probably in mid-June, when I looked, came across that, that statute. And by that time, of course, the appeals period had already run. So, that's all I can tell you about.
So, the 30-day notice is a surprise to everyone? That, that we have to give a 30-day notice?
Yeah, it was to me, I didn't know about it.
Yeah. Again, thank you, thank you for all of that. Thank you for all of that. As I said, it has nothing to do with my opinion of you or those in your office or your work is just a little angst on the, on the last day of our budget. It's something that we definitely weren't planning for, so.
All right, if I remember correctly, we have a motion and a second. This was further discussion. I'm going to call for the question because I don't think anything's going to change.
I did have one quick question, Madam Chair, it won't take very long. Ms. Jewel, would this be something, I know that there was that settlement, that, that fentanyl case that was settled, the Commonwealth, would, would this be a possible source of revenue for this due to the kinds of cases like that that we see? Or have we received any guidance on what those funds can be used for?
Unless this, and I think this would be a stretch, unless this position were solely related to prosecuting drug crimes solely, I don't believe we would be able to use this money. All of those settlements are very clear in that the money has to be used for opioid abatement. And so, if this position does anything outside of drug prosecution, it would go against the settlements.
Good question. All right, is this a, you don't need a roll call, do you?
I just have, I promise, I'll be quick. Going back to my earlier point about school funding, I think this, this kind of demand placed on us, we use the term unfunded mandate in the context of school budgets all the time, and, and everyone throws up their hands and says, "Well, that's the way it is." So, what I'll say again is that I'm going to hold to fiscal year 2025 school funding when we get to our budget season next year because something's got to give and the school is the obvious place that's going to have to give to fund these other mandates on fronts such as prosecution and public safety, et cetera.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goff.
Mr. Whitson, the AED...
Thank you, thank you, board members, I really appreciate it.
Now go get a good one, Art.
Sure. Yeah, this next agenda item came out of the Public Safety Committee meeting, obviously this is near and dear to my heart, literally and figuratively.
Unintended.
It is a, a critical need in our community and especially given our response times can only improve as much as geography and topography allow. And I know from direct and personal experience that defibrillation within seven minutes is key to surviving sudden cardiac arrest without a profound brain injury. And it's hard for me to imagine that most cardiac, it's hard for me to imagine that the 10% of cardiac arrest victims, sudden cardiac arrest victims who do survive, it's hard for me to imagine that that 10% in Rapid County would even hold true. I think it's got to be an even smaller number than that, which is pretty astounding. And so, one kind of patch or one sort of community initiative that has become a best practice, not only for rural communities, but for all kinds of communities, is the strategic deployment of automated external defibrillators. And I know we've gone around a bit with Mr. Stevens and, you know, Debbie Donahue and I, I think, had a dream scenario where we'd have an AED in every, every dark corner of every hollow, which would be incredible, but Mr. Stevens kind of corrected our thinking on that and said, you know, public gathering places should be the target. I, I really am a bit embarrassed that there's a recommended action here to allocate funds and I will, out of respect for my colleagues and given the checks that have been written today, I will, I'll pull back that request and only ask that everyone just think about this because I have, I have tried to secure private funding. We've received a generous contribution from one citizen. I expect others will contribute. And so, the thinking really was the extent to which some seed money from county government might incentivize folks to contribute. And I will make a commitment that I'll at least buy one AED for the, for the county system we hope to implement. But I, I'll, I'm not asking for any decision today. I was just thinking that if, if you all mulled it over and came to the conclusion that this is something you would want to support at some point in the near future, maybe the county could put some seed money in and it might be easier for me and others to talk about private, potential private donors and say that the county has put in money and we hope you will too. Mr. Stevens, I know is going to, he's got three, three units that are going to go up. And do you want to just talk about where and just summarize what we talked about at our last meeting? Because we, like all things Rapid County, we're going to start small, but we're going to start and it's, it's pretty exciting.
Sure. Three units, one of them was a, a private donation that we're putting at their site. They live in the Funtail area and have used their private facilities for public good in terms of pickleball courts and a pool. Secondly, we're two areas of keen public interest that there's a, every Saturday morning they hold court, both the Settles Grocery and the Mini Mart, 211, or the Quick Mart, I'm sorry. I think those were ideas. I, and before I stepped down, I did want to point out, the sheriff shared with me this morning that they, she had a deputy deploying AED over the last few days. A private resident called, they called 911. Deputy was the first to arrive, a second deputy came and bolstered the response. They were able to successfully defibrillate the patient and they spoke, had open conversation on the way to the hospital. So, it looks like we're on our way to a very positive outcome from that and that solely based on the ability of having an AED and somebody trained to use it within four to six minutes from the incident.
Thanks.
Can I do, because of your efforts, and we've talked about this so much, I think you've got a list of the locations that we would like to cover. The QR code is like everywhere for people to donate to anything. So, I'm thinking if we listed somewhere, multiple areas, post office, whatever, the list of the areas that we want to place an AED and would you like to donate? I do believe we've got the most generous county and people would contribute and we can push it around Christmas and everything else. I think it's a great cause, I just...
Yep. And partnering with Rapid Home to create this fund has been fantastic and they have quite a strong network in this county as well, and they said they'll support any of those initiatives.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if this qualifies when the, when that fentanyl settlement comes through, if there's any way to put some of that on there.
Yeah, put some Narcan with the AED, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, that would work.
Ms. Jewel did note that the fire service fund balance could be a source of funds for this instead of the BOS contingency that would fit in that bucket. If the board is inclined to do that, we would have to prepare an appropriation for that, which would be a little bit more tricky than, you know, just allocating contingency, which ultimately would be, have an appropriation with it. But just let us know if that's something you'd like to explore and we can have that at whatever future meeting you want to take action.
Yeah, I'm trying not to be the overbearing poster child here, so just, if, if you just want to leave it on the agenda for a couple of months, I just thought we could all think about it.
Okay.
But I'm excited that at least three units will be deployed and then I'll save my pennies and get another one and probably put it right on the road outside my house despite your advice to the contractor. I'm kidding. I've got one at home, so...
Yeah, but when you're standing at Quickie Mart, make sure you go and look what's here.
I, I will, trust me.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Regional fiber to the home broadband project discussion. Margaret, thanks for sticking around.
Just to be clear, this is not a broadband authority meeting. Margaret, together with people, makes a quorum of that body, so she probably shouldn't talk about it.
Okay. Ms. Smith, can I kick it off?
I had requested this be a standing agenda item, and I know we had all talked about kind of more, more of a review in September when dates that had been put forward had come to pass, dates put forward by All Points Broadband. I, I do wish that we had been able to have a joint meeting today because I do think that people are, have an interest in clawing back the interest from Warren County, from sitting in a bank over there, to a Rapid County bank and making sure the numbers add up and everyone understanding who's in, what interest belongs to whom in the agreement. So, I do think that there is an interest to get that done and I'm disappointed that there wasn't a will from some of the broadband authority members to meet today and hopeful that, that people will see the wisdom of a meeting in the near future. I think everyone is aware that the B program was restructured in the last month or so and that allows for more competition at the federal level with point-to-point, like hotspot type technology, as well as satellite technology like Starlink, so that there will be brisk competition between all the technologies as part of the B program this year. And I am curious to hear from APB how they think that affects their chances of securing that additional funding, which they are heavily relying, so heavily relying.
So, I did have a short conversation with Mr. Ennis and the first thing he said is, "I can't talk about the, for the rules of the program and collusion issues."
the rules of the program and collusion issues, they just can't talk about it publicly. To be aligning with bidders or talking with, you know, just can't do it. So that is happening. And I think there may be a deadline today, yesterday, sometime around now where the next step of that process is, is moving on. Mr. Ennis did suggest that perhaps a monthly structured check-in between them and staff would be good. I told him I welcome, welcome that and also participation in meetings when they are available. And then I did share with the, both boards, the last project update that was released on June 8th that said they expected to be in, starting Rappahannock in 30 days. So let's see. That would be on or about July 8th or 7th, so.
On the account.
Yeah. And so we, I told him that we would love to trumpet their success when they're in the county.
And APB for all PB, APB.
So we're going to get this interest back, correct?
Yes.
Bonnie, can I just run something by you real quick? The longer we, just to, to your point, so the longer we leave the money in, the more, more interest we make because our principal's larger. And we're making interest on the interest, correct?
Well, we would invest it also.
But just here's my question.
Right.
If we were to pull it out now as opposed to realizing it in a year and a half, we'd make less than if we leave it in, correct?
It's still continuing to accrue interest on the base number.
Right. So the question really is what is that rate that it's occurring there?
It's 4%, you can do the math. It's $240,000 a year essentially, which is 4%.
So Treasurer Nick of the Broadband Authority has set up, has invested the Broadband Authority's money in the investment pool, just like she invests most of the excess county cash that isn't needed right now. And the interest rate there and in the United Bank is very similar. It may not be exactly the same. So ultimately, even though the compounding, it is solely a factor of the, those two numbers, the rates.
And we don't know those rates, though.
We could certainly know.
The last report that Treasurer Nick gave to the library, the rate was about 3.4%, 4.3%. There's a change each month.
Right. I mean, the balance impacts the interest. So you got $3.5 million here and you're only going to have.
You're still going to be earning interest on the, on the 5.9 million that's in Warren perpetually, even if you pull out the extra. And then you'll be earning interest in two places and then perhaps at the end of the next fiscal year, you would sweep the interest back again.
I support Christine on this and I, I didn't, I, I didn't want you to see no broadband meeting as any pushback on your idea. I like, I like the idea and I think desperate times call for desperate measures and we're in a hole now due to school funding. So let's go find money somewhere. And you're, you wisely have identified a source and I think my only, my only caution or my only, the only thing I want to say is we need to be cautious about how any withdrawal is communicated to other interested parties because all of our funds are commingled. So, and, and all those funds were placed at different times. So I just want to make sure that if we do execute some withdrawal of that interest revenue, that it's done in a super precise way so that there, that everyone understands what we're, what we're doing. But I support you.
Absolutely. And with a big thank you and the emphasis on, we want to be transparent because this is your money and in an effort to be good stewards of your dollars, which you contributed to our project, we want to track your interests throughout the project and return it to you as quickly as possible.
Yeah, people should get their money back.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Or choose to invest it back into broadband and Rappahannock County.
That's an option too. But we know the, the sooner we get clear on that, the better too.
All right.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Going into county office network modernization, this is, you're waiting for.
First, I want to apologize that this continues to drag on. I came before the board in December and said we had vendor A and vendor B and vendor A was really, really expensive and vendor B was quite a bit more cost effective. But the more I looked, and the board authorized the project at that time and set a budget of $350,000, which was propped up to a large extent by the courthouse security fees, which were specific, allowed for certain things. The more I looked into vendor B, the more I became concerned about the design and the after installation support, which is very important here because we don't have an IT department. And so I, and I think the question came up during that meeting, is there a vendor C? And so we kept looking and have identified another vendor who has a very robust and clear design, is leveraged by various cooperative contracts with neighboring localities in the state, but which exceeds that $350,000. So we went off looking for how are we going to close that gap? And have identified a few different grant processes, packages, programs. Bonnie's been working with the state and local cybersecurity grant program for quite a while, which was, has experts coming, looking at what we have and in our case, don't have. And then it will, we thought we'd hear about that already, but as with all these grants, they seem like they get delayed for whatever reason. And it can provide expert advice and potential services for various things. And so we also knew that we had an opportunity for a second or another round of PSAP, Primary Service Answering Point. Public Safety Answering Point?
Public Safety.
911, where there was $150,000 left that we could go after that was tied in with all the NG 911, Next Generation 911, which had a big bucket of money statewide. And so I guess there's some left and they're saying, hey, you should apply for this. We talked to them and said, well, how is this going to work parallel with the cybersecurity grant? How can we make them work together? And they, and we kind of worked it out and submitted for that $150,000, which we're led to believe we should receive. We just don't, hopefully soon, but again, we're waiting, I think, for their next meeting of that Wireless Services Board. Long story, a little bit longer. With that $150,000, with whatever we get from the cybersecurity grant, we will be able to financially close the gap between vendor C, the allocation the board already made, and we can actually get this project done in a cohesive way, soup to nuts, everything we've talked about. We've already started a relationship with vendor C. They were the contractor who just replaced the computer aided dispatch servers in the sheriff's office. And that was a good starter project, if you will, to make sure they had the wherewithal to handle that very complex project and cut over, which there were a little few hiccups with, I think, IP addresses, but all that's ironed out and it ended well. So I'm looking forward to getting the grant awards, being able to have the board appropriate it, bringing the project to you for award and then having them go to town.
Thank you, Gary.
If there are any questions.
Thank you.
I think we all look forward to knowing that this problem has been solved.
Thanks, Carrie.
All right. Mr. Whitson, new commercial activity and related master.
I'll just say, I do want to thank Barbara Batson, the, maybe this standing agenda item since I always hijack it, should just be things that are happening in the town of Washington, which happens to be my voting district. But I want to thank Barbara Batson, who's the town clerk. I contacted her last week because of a unfortunately placed 20 mile per hour speed limit sign immediately underneath a stop sign that was blocking the view around the corner. And she worked with someone to get that removed and I, I'm grateful because it was, I'd been hearing from people that it made an already dangerous intersection more dangerous. I know that the, everyone might have read in the Rappahannock News, the inn has hired a new general manager who specializes in spas and that sort of thing. So I think soon we're going to, it seems, going to start seeing the spa project move forward. And my limited understanding of it is that it's, it's very different than the original rollout of the big expansion project. So hopefully it'll have less of an impact overall on, on folks transit in the town. But I don't, other than that, I don't really have any updates. Just waiting for Hayfields to open. I think everyone's excited about Brian Neuss bringing his talent to our town, so.
So the town of Washington, zoning administrator did incorporate the broader county staff into reviewing the site plan for the spa. Mr. Stevens is reviewing it from the public safety side with chiefs. And that pavement marking will be incorporated in that because it's all right there. So this is all kind of behind Skippy's store.
It's going to be called Skippy's, Skippy's Store Spa.
It's a significant development. There's also a parking lot development. And then if you've noticed, next to the church, a separate project, there's a pool project going on. And so we will be providing comments back through to the town to make sure that they're recognizing, obviously they'll get the erosion incentive control, stormwater, all that in the normal process. But we'll have expanded discussion regarding public safety to make sure access to vehicles, fire hydrants and things like that.
Yeah, one thing, one thing I was thinking about on this whole 20 mile per hour thing, which frankly, I'll just be blunt, I think it's ridiculous. I, I can't think of any place I've ever been where I'm required to drive 20 miles an hour. And to me, the issue isn't people going through town at 25 being too fast. The issue is that, and this is not to be critical of an awesome business and economic driver in Little Washington, but frankly, I've talked to a number of people who pointed out that the, the dire need for a broad crosswalk on Main Street in the vicinity of the inn because as they've increased their staffing levels, it's got, and everyone wears gray or black, it seems. At dusk, you can, you turn the corner there and there are people walking, walking every which way, both sides of the road. And it's just, it's become like a pedestrian plaza. So I take a little offense that the rest of us have been asked to slow down to accommodate what's frankly, an unruly pedestrian arrangement there that I think could easily have been controlled with a simple crosswalk and perhaps a policy within that business that says, hey, folks, use the crosswalk when you're at work. But instead we are now all required to slow down when we go in the town. So I'd be remiss if I didn't put that on the record.
One thing about the spa, I have always heard that they use a ton of water. And I am concerned and I want to make sure this is on the record, that this board is, you know, it's not our responsibility. But if I understand correctly, Mr. Curry, you have mentioned it in the past as well to the town. It is not going to be, well, it's everybody's problem if those citizens run out of water. But if they're not checking into that thoroughly, I would hope that they will do that before they move a lot of dirt.
Carrie, have you heard from DEQ about the monitoring well? Is it DEQ?
Back here.
Yep.
Over there.
Back there. No, I haven't. I need to reach out and see when they're going to finish that.
But it is DEQ, right?
Yep.
It is DEQ. And it's advanced, it's there, they just haven't installed the reporting equipment on the top.
Oh, okay.
The satellite or cellular connection and all that.
All right.
That would be, that climate well would be good to see long-term.
Yep.
Before that project happens.
Adopted budget.
So are they not, sorry, so are they not taking data or is it just that they're not?
They're not taking data.
Okay, got it.
Not yet anyway.
This is deep overview.
Adopted budget review and next steps. This was after the budget was voted upon. I just wanted to understand kind of where we were. If, knowing that moving forward, I think we can make even more fiscally responsible decisions. And so I asked Bonnie to put together the document. And then I know Supervisor Comer had also said, why wait until, you know, five months before the new budget's got to go live? Why are we not having that conversation as we go through the year? So that's why we combined these two together. And Bonnie, thank you very much for your document. The one part that is where it stands out to me is almost a million dollar difference in unassigned, the bottom line of all the, the rows from 23 to 25. And just making sure that we're all very aware and up to speed with what we agreed to in the policy. So Bonnie, I don't know if you want to speak to any of this and.
So the use of unassigned fund balance by itself is not a problem.
Right.
Particularly when it's aligned with one-time needs. So you want to renovate a building, you use the money and that's, you want to buy a widget that doesn't need to be bought every year, then that's a good thing.
Yep.
Not a good thing. It's a reasonable thing. But your policy says you won't do that for recurring expenses. And in the, in this budget that you've just adopted, there's now $434,000 of recurring expenses. You just added $28,000. $434,000 that is not backed up by recurring revenue, not considering the textbook purchases and bus if the bus actually is an annual need rather than just the one time. And maybe these used buses will forestall that need for a couple of years. But absent cuts, you're in the hole, starting off next year's budget before you even hear the general assembly say, we're going to do a good thing. We're going to give your employees a name to percent raise.
3%.
Which adds to the unfunded portion that needs to be handled locally and, or, you know, many of your positions aren't comforably funded, so it just causes issues. And so before you even grow any expenses just to natural inflation, whether it's from REC or whatever vendor we have, you've got two pennies plus that you need to try to find. Or over the next, you know, $400,000 or $500,000 a year, it doesn't take very many years when your $2.1 million of fund balance that you have available to use is gone.
I think we should have a joint meeting with the school board this summer. And the school board members should sit right there and we should just put these numbers up. I mean, I, I circled two numbers that come to $626,000. That's, that's 40915 plus additionally 218803, general fund balance, call it 626. And we just say, you, not us, you figure it out. Because next year you're going to get $626,000 less and our unfunded mandate problem is solved immediately. That's easy. And we don't have to think about tax increases or any other machinations to work around the obvious problem.
Well, I, I ask, I wanted to talk about this because during the budget season, I had several people say to me, well, why, why aren't all those departments looking at their spending? Why aren't, what, you know, why, could we cut here? Could we cut there? And, and the best people to ask that question are those living it, boots on the ground. And then the more I thought about it, the more, it really is a good exercise. I know that, you know, other localities do it periodically, you know, kind of send out a memo, not saying we will. But if we said next year, we're going to cut your budget by X amount, what would that look like for you? And again, I, I think it's a very prudent exercise because it kind of forces someone, it forces everybody really to take a look at their budget, what they're spending and if, as I just said, if you were told you weren't going to get that money, what would you do in response? To include, yeah, to include the schools. And I also think it's something, having now done the budget, gone through the budget cycle just twice, I still remember my first one, sitting down and Christine saying, well, welcome to your first budget cycle. So now, two years in, I, it blows my mind that we wait so long. It is my perception that we wait so long. So I just think for fiscal year 2026, I, I think we as a board should. So I just think for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, um, I, I think we as a board should...
Twenty-seven.
Yeah, thank you, I'm sorry. Um, should work, um, we should start working now. The expectation of our constituents is that we are working now. So this was, um, that's, I think I may have called Ms. Jewel. We maybe hadn't even voted yet. And I called her, I said, what would this look like? And she says, well, yeah, we could ask. And then I, I spoke to Mr. Curry about it. Please, um, let's put this on the, um, agenda. Cause I know I can't, you know, I can't walk into whatever office and say, hey, look at your budget and see what a ten percent cut would look like. But I wanted to see what my colleagues thought about asking all departments across our county business to take a look. And, and maybe decide on what percentage. Ten percent might sound high, um, seven percent. And, and force everyone to kind of look, look at their budgets and their spending.
Ms. Jewel, when do you actively start the budget process? Cause I know you do a lot of work before we start looking at it.
We started in November and then roll out requests to, um, regional and partner agencies in December. And then to departments in January and request that they look at their budgets and give us their requests. So we start that early. And one of the reasons, a couple of the reasons that board members might think, oh, we get this really late. The state code requires the county administrator to, as one of his responsibilities, one of his or her responsibilities is, to present a budget, a balanced budget to the board supervisors. But another reason that we wait so long is it's not until the middle part of December that we get any indication whatsoever from the state on what the governor's budget is and then how the general assembly members react to that. So that's, that's, those are the two main things that push that out. But certainly, we can do this if the board wants to move in this direction on the expense side. We won't, we still won't have any revenue information until the middle of December at the earliest.
And, and while we, we really like budgeting and we wanna save money, if all we do is budgeting, there are other things that can't be done, right?
Right, right.
So we have to have some balance and, um, and, and we take our lead from the board relative to what those policies are and, you know, how, how much do you want us to work and what is the ultimate benefit from that is an important question to ask on this. Because we're a finite resource.
I mean, I think you all did your job this year in that you were responsive to the majority of the board. When the majority of the board said, we wanna spend more money, that's what you all facilitated. So certainly, I don't look to staff to, to ask you how to fix what was essentially a board, a board issue. You can't, you can't do both things at the same time. I have, I have found that on this board, uh, encouraging cuts is a tough row to hoe. I think I'm always the first one that wants to talk about cuts. I think I'm the only one that probably has any interest in doing a line item review of the, of the budget as a board, um, the way we used to do it. But I'll be sitting in the cheap seats next year and I'll still be encouraging you to do that and joining you in that exercise should you all choose to take it up as a board. The other option for the board when we face a, a shortfall like this is how can we drive revenue up? And one thing I have heard from folks that were in attendance when we talked about the meals and lodging tax is that they were surprised that there wasn't, um, an encouragement or general information from the county about the different ways that we collect tax revenue.
Right.
So that, um, the, the more passive sources for online spending and for, um, placing orders online and going to pick them up in neighboring localities, that those, that those were also funds that we realized. And how those have been changing in recent years. And if there's opportunities to have a, a countywide promotion of that information so that folks realize, hey, um, you know, if you're gonna shop, first, please shop local because we rely on our local businesses and they are a charger for our county. And I think back to, well, those many years ago when there were not very many businesses in the county. And I'm always amazed at all of the resources that we have at our disposal. So we certainly wanna keep all of the businesses that we currently have in the county and encourage entrepreneurship in the county. But if you do need to shop for something that you can't get in the county and shop outside of Rappahannock County, these are ways that you can still contribute revenue, um, to the county. And that's, that's not a painful way to shop.
Right.
And maybe encourage passively, realize some additional revenue that way.
Another, another revenue generation idea that a constituent raised with me, which I thought was an interesting idea. But I, um, definitely would want to go sit with, uh, treasurer Nick before going too far down this road. And maybe Bonnie, you and Gary would disavow me of the, of the wisdom of this. But since we're talking about, uh, interest revenue, the idea of semi-annual tax, real property tax payments to put more money in the bank earlier during, during the fiscal year so that you would get a hit of cash, you know, in July. And then another hit of cash in December, in June and December. And you're sitting on, but, I mean, I don't, I don't know how, how this would be executed. But it seems like you could, you could plant potentially half of your real property tax revenue in the bank. Also, I suppose from a public relations standpoint, it could be argued that it's kinder and gentler.
Or, or that you're doing a summer vacation and Christmas.
Right, right. I mean, I, I pay mine every month, not, most people don't. But, uh, you know, just an idea, you know, working with what we're already getting, um, but putting more money in the bank sooner.
Remember the why, but I think we did look into that.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think Falkir County does it that way.
Moore County does it that way.
Most counties do, however, um, there's a lot more work for the treasurer's office.
Yeah, that's why I don't wanna be...
Worth the squeeze. Back in the day, most counties jumped at that because it basically advances half of a tax collection. And it gives you a half a tax collection bump that you can take credit for, for capital.
Yeah.
In the first year.
In the first year, that's it. That is over. And if you ever go back the other way, you're in big trouble.
Yep.
When W. Nick hears me, hears that I raise this idea, um, I just wanna say that I'm only throwing it out there. And I will defer to her if she says that there's no way.
Yeah, juice and squeeze is important.
Yeah, totally. It's just, it was an interesting idea raised by a thoughtful person. And I would be remiss if I didn't ask the question, so.
Uh, Ms. Jewel did prepare a very extensive list of all of the ways that taxes or tax programs or revenue can be generated, extracted, uh, by localities. That's in the questions to the budget answers or FY twenty-six.
I just think it's number one.
Out there, um, that hasn't been talked about. There's no, you know, hidden like magical revenue button. The, the B-pole and the, um, you know, machinery tools sort of things have been bandied around for a long time. And the, the same conversation of, is the revenue worth the administration? And I don't think there's any good way to know the answer to that, other than, you know, it's a painful process to figure it out.
And for both of those, they've written out the ability to apply those to farm wineries.
But...
Which is kind of amazing, actually. That's how powerful Wine Lobby is.
And I did meet...
Cause I did go back and look this budget session to see, and they're specifically eliminated.
Trying to find it, but I met with Mary Graham the other day and we were talking about land use and all that wonderful ways that we can and can't do things based on what the state says. But there is, I had a, a citizen ask me basically stay, they would say they wish they weren't in land use, but they don't want the five-year back tax penalty. And I didn't realize it and I can't find it on the website, but we actually have a program where you can start paying full tax now and for five years, continue your paying or whatever. And after that five years, you get out without a penalty.
You pay your five-year back taxes.
As you go.
Right, right.
That makes perfect sense.
It does. I didn't know it was doable. But I, I need to find where it was on the website because she showed me and now I've lost it. But I think more than anything, this talk, this spearhead some conversation about what we can do, both expense and income. And I don't know, cause I'm not a fan of committees, but it would be very nice if we could continue to have these conversations throughout the year. And yes, meet with, uh, the school board, um, as a group now, instead of waiting for the meeting in February just to start trying to find, you know, the Easter egg. Mr. Whitson, I'll use your...
And that's the earliest meetings in the budget calendar. Staff wants those to get direction. So if the board's direction is, there will be no tax rate increase. We're gonna make it work. Now, there are gonna be, you know, consequences, services, to services that the board might not like. But we need that direction to figure out what to come out with. Otherwise, without any constraints, we're trying to read the tea leaves and deliver what we think makes sense for the end of the day where, where the board will end up. And sometimes we're close and sometimes we're not. But if, if there's specific directives, then we should hear them very early while we're preparing our kind of straw man budget, for lack of a better word.
I'll put my input in right now, no tax increase.
And so that's an important one-fifth input that means nothing to us, right?
Yeah.
And it's an election year, so, you know, I'm not gonna be much help. But you know how I always feel about the budget.
Yeah. So, but, but it's, it is important. If there is a will of the board, we need to know about it early.
Yep.
Yeah.
So maybe we can set a date in November to have a joint meeting with the school board. And, you know, let's start now thinking, how can we gather data to make their job easier for us next year?
Yeah, I, yeah.
I honestly think November is still late to have that conversation with the school. And again, I, you know, I'm getting the feeling that no, the idea of asking departments to take a look at that, their budget, um, now and saying, based on the budget you got this year, let's pretend and make believe land that next year it's, that is the money we're working with and we ask you to, to cut it by seven percent, three percent, five percent, whatever. What would that look like? Again, I know we've done it in Falk, our department's been asked to do it in Falkir County. Did the cut come? No. Did it force our department to take a good hard look at what we were spending and where we were putting that money? Absolutely it did. So I still maintain that that would be a prudent exercise. And I would, I would suggest that meeting with the school board come earlier than November.
I don't, I don't disagree with you.
August would be too soon. They, they're kicking off, but, yeah.
Somewhere between August and November.
I think if you're going around, if you're going, I, I appreciate the sentiment. But if anyone's pretending that our, the pickle we're in from this unfunded mandate, or, I'm sorry, a structural deficit, um, perspective is anything but the schools missing the boat. I mean, you can ask, you can ask the treasurer to use three reams of copy paper less and otherwise, uh, trim her budget by ten percent and it's not gonna get us very far. Again, I, I appreciate the idea, but if we're not talking about what the school's doing, we're missing the point.
But we are, we're roping the schools into this conversation.
Yeah, but it's not, the burden shouldn't... The, the burden that's been placed on us by, um, the school board and, uh, their inability to ask hard questions now has put us yet again into this scramble where we're gonna go around the county government and ask everybody to cut, you know, five, ten percent. Again, I, the principle is fine, but I just think that the point is the school. And it, you, look at the, look at the numbers. They're, they're above eleven million dollars.
I do think that, um, both of you guys have a solid point in the sense that in this discussion, it is good to look at everything. The majority of the money is going to the schools. I think the most difficult thing is that we get cost of living raises every year. That's, I mean, it's just going up and up and up. And if there's a three percent increase on salaries for the teachers next year, that's four hundred thousand dollars.
Right, but with no hard questions on the flip side, which is what can we do better to offset cost increases by reducing expenses? And that never happens, ever. Look at, look at Bonnie's one pager that I had her put together. The trend is up, the trend of enrollment is down, and nobody ever asks, why is it that that trend continues without anyone ever asking what we're spending money on? Eleven million dollars is enough. In fact, ten million dollars is enough.
I was just gonna say though, aside from that point was that I do agree with Ms. Comer in the sense that I think it's probably healthy just to look around and to do the exercise that you were talking about. Just because, I mean, it's almost like an internal audit, you know, it's just like, hey, things that in all institutions, there's always internal pressure to exceed your bounds. None of these institutions that we have, including ours, generate money. As we, Ms. Smith pointed out, you know, we take personal property from people and spread it around. That's what we do. And so I do think it's really healthy just to constantly be doing that and saying like, hey, you know, what can you cut? What can you cut? What can you cut? You know, we might get to that point where all the departments, um, say, you know, they, they come up with not a whole lot. And to Mr. Whitson's point, when I do agree with him, that there's probably not a whole lot in those other departments that they're gonna be, that are gonna make a significant difference when eighty-three percent of that, you know, transferred fund goes towards personnel, instructional staff at the school. But I do think as a principal, I think it's a good idea.
Well, I wish, I wish a majority of our board had done that exercise with the school system this year so that we weren't in this pickle. That's what I mean by hard questions. Nobody ever dares go against children, go against education, go against the spine of our community by asking, how is it that your enrollment declines and your spending increases? I get the point. I get the point. Everything is getting more expensive. But at some point, and I will disagree with Mr. Sullivan, my constituent, who said, hey, you guys are gonna need to go find more revenue at some point. No, we really don't. We're looking pretty simply here in Rappahannock County. If our school system would live simply, we wouldn't be in this position year after year after year. So I think three of you could have asked the questions that Donna's now suggesting that we pose to county departments. Ask the school. That's where the money is.
You may have not gone into the school to ask the questions, but I know I did. I know Donna did. I've sat in on the school board meetings where they went line by line on their budget. We did that. So I don't know what more than you're either listen to the response you get from the leadership in that role or you decide, and we don't have the right to decide it, that the leadership in that role is not the right leader. That's not our, that's the school board. That's not ours. So to say none of us did that, I think is wrong.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that that's totally accurate. And in fact, I, I did ask that question and I have logic behind where I think that money came from or the cost driver came from. I, 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 we had multiple meetings where I sort of added it up. But I think the point moving forward is that I think you can do the same thing what Ms. Ms. Comer's suggesting. You can do that with the school board, absolutely. You can just say like...
We should have some workshops.
You can just say, you can say, hey, um, you know, and I have asked Dr. Grimsley that multiple times. And I get the same answer. It would be positions. It would be people.
Yep.
I talked to her all the time.
Which positions and, and you could go down that route. And I don't, to my previous point, I think that all institutions suffer from internal pressure to exceed their bounds. I think it's different when you've got a private corporation because it's just functionally different. Businesses are different.
Every county in region seven, because I went to the meeting, has the same complaints we do. Theirs are just larger dollars because they're larger counties. And if anything, that is somewhat comforting. But they have ways, industrial ways, other ways to bring in money that we don't have. And that's where the question comes up about how we're gonna pay the bills.
Yeah.
Well, I, I guess my thought is that, uh, you know, we're trying very hard to live within our means on the county side. We need to have a heart-to-heart with our peers on the school board and find out what they're doing going forward to live within their means on the school board side. going forward to live within their means on the school board side.
Let's go back to what Ms. Comer actually said, which is we've got to get our school board representatives to ask the questions that we want to hear the answers to.
Yeah, Ms. Bynum was the only school board member here the night of our, our budget vote. And I asked that question, what, what did you cut from your budget? She couldn't answer it. That's inexcusable. She couldn't answer it.
I don't, I, I don't, she said she, they did cut stuff. I mean, whether it's they did or not.
Okay.
I just think the point of my, my request to have this on the agenda, yeah, on the agenda, is to start now. So I think November's too late. I think August is too soon. If you would reach out to your counterpart on the school board and maybe we find September, October, and then we start. If, if it were me, if I were completely in charge and nobody, I didn't have to ask anybody else, I would ask all the department heads, again, not saying this is going to happen, but if I ask you to cut your budgets by 3%, assuming that the jumping off point is exactly what we had this, this year, what would that look like? And I'm not asking for a granular, three reams of paper, packs of pen. I'm asking for broad, a broad sweeping exercise. But we don't have to do that.
I can wait till February.
Oh, I think all productive conversations are productive.
Well, I mean, there, there are some departments that underspend, underspend on the annual basis. So I mean, are we going to call everybody in? I, I think that it would be helpful to know, like, I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, shake every tree if there's just a couple that will bear fruit.
The three, the 3%, 3% of the total general fund budget, including the transfers out. So that would get, the transfer to social services, the transfer to CSA, the transfer to the library, the transfer to the schools. That 3% across the board would fill the $653,000 gap that we're talking about.
For kicks and giggles, that's what I propose. This first meeting of the new fiscal year. But again, we don't have to. I would like the joint, and I think Mr. Woodson will probably agree, the joint meeting with the school board sooner rather than later.
Let's do the school board meeting in September and then meet with other department heads. If you can pull some data for us, Bonnie, on what would be the most beneficial departments? The largest ones that, in a comparison of what we allocated versus what was spent.
Okay.
That might help us identify the best areas to engage.
The department's heads have been in this position for quite some time. My guess is most of them, it wouldn't take them long to just come up with a.
Right, right. Honestly, we're not going to get much.
Finding the marginal dollar is always valuable. I can tell you, since I've been here, I've been clawing out marginal dollars from every department. Bonnie had a completely separate look at it when she came here, clawing out marginal dollars. And those departments who might underspend year over year, or over budgeting year over year, and we've been extracting budget from those departments year over year to bring the budget closer in line with reality. Now, what we haven't done is anything that would have service impacting results. And that's been our line. And as, it's been in the budget proposal since Bonnie's been here, one of the goals is to maintain service, maintain the services that we have at the level we have. And so the board has taken various actions here and there to increase service because it's, it's a good and wise thing to do. If we want to be in the mode of cutting service, we need to know that. If we just want to go after inefficiencies and maintain service, that's a different conversation or some combination of both. But that direction is important to those departments as they're looking at any production, because you want to cull 3% and you're taking out the fixed contracts and the electric bill and all the other things that we don't have control over, then, then we're talking about staff. It's just, that's what it is. There's nothing else left. And so we just need to know, is that what we're talking about? Are we, you know, is that what we want to do? And we can do it.
All we have to do is tell the school board what they can expect in terms of funding and set that number in a way that eliminates our structural deficit and we're done. That's what we can do in September. Just pick a number and tell them to live within their means. That's what I meant, I mean, when I said a majority didn't ask the hard questions. Our question should have been, can you, can you open the schools and turn on the lights with $10 million instead of 11? And I'm pretty sure the answer would have been, yes, we can.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your effort. The attend community project funding request. That's Mr. Woodson?
Yeah, I just wanted, I, I read the Mad Rap Amateur or whatever it's called online and it was a big story about how our freshman congressman was pursuing this money. And I had met with him at an event and turns out that this has been underway for a couple of months and I hadn't heard from anyone about it. And I just wanted to be prepared to answer any questions from constituents. So I ask Gary, if you could just walk through what this all means, mainly to manage expectations, because I can't imagine that this will be an easy path forward. But absolutely appreciate the initiative by county staff and Ms. Donahue and our congressman, who definitely is trying to do the right thing here. So I just wanted to know kind of how this all transpired and what it means.
Yeah, thank you. And we, there's a narrative that goes through the timeline, but in very general terms, annually, we hear from our congressional representatives that the, you know, what do we need? We can put money into the federal budget for you and then we find out, oh, not you. Because our demographics and median household income just don't qualify for any of the funding sources. And so we've kind of grown, grown tired of getting these emails every year and reading the lists of other counties who are clearly much poorer than we are, who get funded, you know, Fairfax and these other places. And so then the information came this year. We looked at it, said, oh, great, that's wonderful. It'd be cool if we could get some money. And then we had a whisper that, no, they might waive the income eligibility requirements this year. And we said, really? That sounds like interesting. That would be wonderful. And I said, Bonnie, let's get some money for the courthouse. So Bonnie worked hard. This all came together. I think mid-April, we heard that there was not going to be the income restrictions. The application, I think, had to be in by April 18th, which I think Bonnie turned around in a couple of days. Then by May 2nd, we had to have our complete package in, including any supporting information. We drew letters of support from Delegate Weber, the court clerks, county attorney, sheriff, and Chair Donahue from herself. We just didn't have time for a board meeting. We did that, reported on that in our monthly report for administration. But we didn't talk about it at the May 5th meeting. We probably should have. I should have highlighted it to make sure everybody was aware of what happened between the April and May meetings when the situation came together in a way that we could apply. So we're grateful that the congressman's office and staff incorporated our request. We requested $6 million. They said, you know, people don't get $6 million and say, oh, we're going to ask for it. And we think, well, we know that ultimately there's a million and some odd dollars, you know, in some bill somewhere in some dark committee that might be funded, might not. It's further than we've ever gotten with this kind of funding. And I don't know when we'll find out. Quite frankly, I don't know if Bonnie knows when we'll find out.
Well, thanks a lot.
I, I just wanted to say, you know, timing being everything. I, I really wish that we had known about this before we voted to do the sewer project in Sperryville or that we had waited on that, because this would have been, in my opinion, seeing the other applicants are really good fit for that need and perhaps a more timely fit for that need in light of all the additional planning we still need to do on the courthouse project. And I just, I would be remiss if I didn't say, I, I wish that we had voted on this.
And I wish we knew about it a year ago when, you know, sewer authority was considering the bonds for that project, but we just didn't.
This is one of the sources of revenue that we looked at last year. It was Jennifer Wexton's office at that point. And the income, the income limits prohibited us really from applying for it then. It's only this year that they have, committee is saying that they're lifting those, that there was an avenue for us to apply for this. So this is one of the avenues we looked at for that.
I just, I hear what you're saying about there not being time for a meeting and I know timing is everything, but there can always be a special call meeting. And in my opinion, on this topic, there should have been a special call meeting and we all should have been able to support the effort.
And we didn't hear about it at the June meeting either.
That's correct. And that is the only issue I take with this application. My other question is, should the project change substantially? Would the funding follow the project or is the funding devoted to this iteration of the courthouse exclusively?
The funding must be obligated within 12 months of the federal appropriation, whenever that federal appropriation occurs. So as long as we can have a signed design contract for the full design, we can have a signed construction contract. That would be the obligation. But if the project goes on beyond that 12 months and we have no obligated contract, we would not be able to use this funding.
So it really pushes the envelope for the timing, for the approval of the courthouse project?
Yes, we would need to be within 12 months of that appropriation. And again, I don't know when that appropriation is going to occur.
Right, if it occurs.
If it occurs, yes.
That's all I have.
All right, moving into board committee reports. Ms. Comer, recreational facilities?
So they had free fish day. I was in Harrisonburg at State Revival Track Team at the high school, but I believe some of my colleagues attended. And that was based on what they reported out the last meeting. It was a huge success. Yeah, that's real, the last meeting was really recapping a lot of free fish day.
Do you have anything on the exercise or the kids' play area, the gym that we're trying to?
Playground?
Yeah.
The playground. I don't, I can't remember exactly where they are on that.
I was speaking.
I think the RFP went out for that, but I'm not 100% sure. Maybe I'm wrong.
Speaking to someone that is a teacher in Wakefield in Huntley, and they are getting a new playground.
Oh, yeah.
And I thought, is there a way to get two for a discount?
Thank you for building a new playground there.
So just a thought.
Yeah, I'll definitely mention that at the, at the next meeting.
Okay. Public safety, Mr. Woodson?
Yeah, we, I think we have, we met since our last board meeting, I think. I don't know.
I think so too.
I don't, did we ever? I don't know. Anyway, we had a meeting. We covered a lot of ground.
We're going to have another meeting.
And we're going to have another meeting. And it's, it's a good group of people and I think we get stuff done.
I agree. And I heard a call yesterday of a wrong-way driver around Colvin Road.
There you go. That's the.
That's the area.
That's the area. That's the area. So let's definitely revisit that because I think VDOT was on, potentially on the hook for putting a camera or something there.
They were going to improve the signage at that intersection in Culpeper, but.
I did, I did notice coming out of Williams Street Service from the side parking line that you'd have to try really hard to not know that you're pulling onto a divided highway. I mean, the new signage is pretty explosive.
Yeah, yeah. Planning Commission?
We had a meeting and we had two of the breakout sessions. We had Flint Hill and Washington meetings at both those fire departments. And then we had a regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting. We have a special call meeting tomorrow night, or I should say a continued meeting, not a special call meeting. You'll hear probably about two of the applications we reviewed at our most recent meeting. You'll hear this evening. The Leach Cottage Industries submission application. I understand that's been withdrawn. It just says tabled still on the update. But it has, I believe it has been withdrawn. So we won't be hearing that. Planning Commission work in the breakout sessions, you know, it's tough. And I mean, I wanted to hear from you all about this. Most of the people that attend the meetings have not read the comprehensive plan, which I, I can't say that I knew what the comprehensive plan was before. I ran for the Board of Supervisors. So I, I noticed when I went to the website over the weekend that the narrative on the county website is still the budget narrative. And I was hoping we could alter that so it would become.
You mean the alert box?
Yeah, whatever, whatever that is, you want to call it, to be Planning Commission related and drive people to the comprehensive plan and remind them of meeting dates. And that in addition to the, to the breakout sessions at the fire departments, there's always an opportunity for public input at the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meetings and regularly scheduled Board of Supervisor meetings. Because as we know with these big projects, sometimes you get to the end and then people are saying, wait, wait, I didn't get a chance to talk about this.
Right.
And it's an exercise in staying one step ahead.
I do believe the folks that attended the Flint Hill one enjoyed the meeting.
It's a lot of, it's a lot to discuss and there's a lot of competing interests.
I tried to go to the Washington one, but it was the one that was canceled.
That one was canceled. And then, and then the next one, six people came, but I thought it was a good meeting. You know, sometimes there are just natural conflicts and people don't come out. So we do what we can.
Ben, the Fire Levy Board, did you guys meet?
We did not meet.
You look upset about that.
So the body will be meeting, they met a while back and recommended to the board to adopt the revised guidelines, which the board did. Those revised guidelines will now serve as the basis for the next cycle of bill review, which will happen in the next couple of months.
All right, treasurer's reports. I'm always interested in cash flow and the sales tax. That one seems like a good one to look at.
Cash flow, see, June 30 cash is about the same as it was last year, which is interesting. Hard to say. Sales tax, I think you're seeing the impact of inflation, right? So as the basis, as the base grows, the tax on the base grows. Let's see, we've, we've seen higher collections several months.
Yep. That's the advertisement Christine did last month.
Every little bit helps.
Bye, bye, bye. Anything else, legal matters you've got?
So Mr. Caff said that he, he thinks that the earliest that the Supreme Court would dock it, the Flint Hill case would be in the October 27 session. For my report, I did think of one thing I didn't write in there, but I probably should have, related to landfill. I wrote a couple of months ago that we were shifting from detection groundwater monitoring to assessment groundwater monitoring, which doesn't mean a lot to you, but basically it means you have to sample for much more, much more, many more constituents. And that was because cobalt showed in one of our wells at higher than background, but like 10 times less than the maximum contaminant level. That's their rules. So we went through the first assessment monitoring cycle. We had a few weird organics hit. We did a verification sample and there, they were shown to be artifacts or contamination, screened out through blanks and whatnot. So we're kind of back to where we were. We don't have to sample for extra stuff and cobalt is still a contaminant of interest. However, it's in concentrations that are less than was even in the Culpeper water supply, public water supply, which is allowed there because it's way less than the maximum contaminant level. It just happens to be more than is in the up gradient groundwater in our landfill or actually site grade. But so it's just rules. So we're going through it. Things didn't get worse, which is, which you should take away from the conversation. But I didn't, I neglected to add that in. But I didn't, I neglected to add that into the report.
The only thing under emergency services, I saw that we got, or Ms. Waters put in for a grant for the Lucas devices and she got the award for that.
Yes, that's my understanding, the RSF grant, so that's excellent. I did also want to highlight the building permit report. If you didn't take a look at it, nine and a half million dollars recognized there, seven million in addition. I'd have to talk to Marlene and Rich to understand what that is. These are estimates provided by contractors. Their fees are based on these estimates, however, so they usually aren't trying to go over. Eventually, whatever physical improvements are made will get captured as that building permit is shared over to the commissioner of revenue and they have a process linked up in that, the value. But, you know, $10 million of assessed value is $63,000 of tax revenue at the end of the day. So.
Third of a penny.
The numbers aren't exact and but investment, that's revenue.
And then the addendum item, when I read it, I don't know if folks have a chance to read it, it, I get the sense that they're concerned that it's going to continue to get worse and they're, I just get the feeling there's not a comfort level, that they have the expertise maybe that they need for this project or ongoing authority. I don't know, maybe I'm totally wrong, but.
Well, I mean, you have a citizen volunteer board. You have some fairly well-informed folks on the body now. It's a mixture. So people definitely know the community. Some people have an engineering background in this space and so there's a lot of different type folks. So I think that's, that's good. I do think that they have, the authority board has some concerns long-term about management and whether the current setup is appropriate and the best way to do it for this community. Those are conversations that should happen between that authority board, created by the Board of Supervisors and the board. Regarding the current capital project, I think they feel okay proceeding with that project. They're going through normal project methods. They're doing it as affordably as possible, only because Mr. Lloyd is willing to invest a certain amount of his personal time to coordinate things, to almost serve as a general in a way, to coordinate other contracts. So, so that's good, that they're doing it as affordably as possible. When those plant upgrades are done, that will serve as a basis for a long time at the plant, but not the collection system. So if there's a future opportunity for funds after this project is done, finding outside revenue for that collection system would be very, very high on the list. We did include it in the regional hazard mitigation plan, which is caught up and Fed hasn't approved it yet. But that will make it eligible for various grants. So we're hoping.
I just, I did want to point out, I'm a, I'm a user, I'm a subscriber to the sewer system. And I was going to ask whoever showed up today, but unfortunately, nobody did. We received a utility fee and then our regular EDU bill. Do y'all know, is it, is it just a special assessment that everybody received this month?
I don't know.
I guess I'll, I guess I'll ask the Water and Sewer Authority because my neighbors and they've all received it too. So I, I don't know if it's just a special assessment for homeowners or.
So either the treasurer who issues the bills now might know just from their communication for getting it on the bill.
Yeah, I just would say that I've asked several times our appointees on the Water and Sewer Authority to please include a narrative that explains what's going on at the Water and Sewer Authority, especially when there's changes in the bills. And there's no narrative to explain why we receive something different than we normally receive. And I, I would really appreciate if you all would convey the same message that since we're sending a bill every month, it's also an opportunity to communicate.
Makes sense.
And you're welcome to look at my bill.
Only look at it.
Should be for one of you.
You're welcome to say it if you should be so inclined. Also, also take donations.
So there's no information on it?
No.
It's Chris Parrish when you need it.
Are you actually offering to let me look?
It just says, yes, the first page says utility fee. And then the second page is the breakout with the EDUs. And then the third page is to tell me about all the increases and to go to the benevolent fund should I not be able to afford it, which is really great that we've increased things so much that we're telling people to go beg. But anyway, so for, for these and all things, you can call the RCWSA office or consult Board Docs, which I'm sure there's nothing on Board Docs about this either.
I don't know. They do have reasonably detailed agendas, so.
Yeah, the utility fee.
Matters presented by the board, Ms. Comer?
I was going to say, I always go first. So I went to speak.
You look like you're ready.
Well, maybe somebody else. Okay, so, well, as always, I just want to thank the volunteers and the folks at the, at Company Three at Amosville, another great carnival. And for at least three years in a row, they really, they battle the weather, the weather tests their, their determination and Amosville always wins that test. So that was wonderful. And then someone from BTC reached out to me. She'd been seeing posts from Amosville Market. And so she reached out to me and I invited her to Amosville and we had a lovely little tour of, of Amosville, of the market and of course, the three wineries. She let those businesses know about all kinds of grants that are coming up. So I'll be happy to share that information. And then she told me about a grant that will open in February that I think we would all be very interested in because it will match a dollar to every 50 cents that is spent on tourism. So I'll, I think you were, I think I passed that on to you, that, that lady's name. So, yeah, it was a wonder, it was a good day in Amosville. So she's, Kelly Weaver is her name. And she's a ball of energy. So if she comes and spends any time with you, be well rested.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Ms. Smith?
I had something, it's gone now.
I can come back.
You're with me. What was it? I'll have to think about what it was.
Mr. Whitson?
I just, I promised my constituent I would give a public accolade to ALS 1400 and the Sheriff's Department. And actually, this is, now that I think about it, in the context of what happened in Texas, it's really scary, but constituents in my mind, who I won't name, live on Grandview Road. Their grandson and a friend of his came from Northern Virginia, spent a few days, and they floated the Covington River down to the confluence, I guess, with Thornton and did so successfully and had such a great time that after going on a hike up in the National Park, they asked to do it again. And it happened the second time to be as a thunderstorm settled over that area and blew the Covington out through a relatively limited, short-duration flash flood. And they, the grandparents who are my constituents lost track of where the children were. And thanks to the Sheriff's Department and ALS 1400, I think Virginia, not, no longer Valentine, Virginia, who's on our ALS 1400 roster, Savage, was there. And I know the sheriff and her deputies were there with drones and whatnot. And it all turned out well, but I can't imagine how awful that must have been until they knew they were okay. But it's just a reminder at a local level that these, these summer thunderstorms can cause real problems.
Mr. Carney?
I just wanted to say what Ms. Comer said. My, my kids, there's two things. The carnival, the Amosville carnival, thank you, thank you. It's something that my kids look forward to every year and they, they, they try to get me to go on the rides, but the last year when I did, I was nauseous for 48 hours. So I couldn't do it again this year. But it's just always just a really good community event. And the concert in Little Washington as well. Just want to thank the town for a really nice event. It wasn't as hot as last year, but I hope everybody had a good Fourth of July. And, and Sperryville at the, at the Eastam. You know, this is the time of year where there's just a lot of community events going on and it's just, I think that there was larger turnout this year maybe at the fireworks.
Such great weather.
The weather was so nice.
Yeah.
It was really nice. It was really nice. And it's just a time of the year that I always look forward to just because there's just, you know, I feel like there's a lot going on. So I just wanted to thank everybody.
Ms. Smith?
I remembered. It was a passing thought, but it's an important one. The transition to the cashless system up at Shenandoah National Park, I did not know how our relationship was with the new park superintendent, but that started July 1st. So if we could get feedback from the park or open a line of communication about how that's going and.
They did reach out to me ahead of time, asked for local vendors who might be willing to sell passes. I gave them several local vendors who might want to do that.
Right.
Who could sell them for cash. Also, in my report, I met last week with the chief law enforcement, what they're called ranger, and VDOT to talk more about the October traffic. So we're moving forward on that too.
Well, that sounds good.
Can you just find to me, so are you not going to be able to purchase a pass up there now?
With cash. You cannot purchase a pass with cash.
Oh, truly.
At the interest rate. But they're partnering with commercial establishments in nearby towns where you could purchase with cash or credit.
Yeah, I think Corner Store are on our way.
But you'll be able to buy credit up there?
Yeah, you can use your credit card.
Got you, got you, got you. Okay, cool.
The only thing I had was Amosville, Sperryville, both amazing. And then I did not think about it last month, but the flags that are up in Flint Hill, the businesses and some local citizens basically sponsored a poll that REC gave us the authority to be on, I think, last year. It's just taken that long to get that done. We're figuring out what flag brackets work the best. We've had a couple break. But we have a gentleman who has a ladder truck and he comes out and helps, which is awesome. And hopefully we'll get to the point where we can have the banners with the military, local military people that have passed, that will be on the polls as well, but we haven't gotten that far. So just, I think it looks very nice going through Flint Hill now, if you haven't noticed.
Can you, can you serve concurrently as the mayor of Flint Hill?
I don't know. I haven't looked at the bylaws.
You should do it.
Before I forget, I just, I saw Mr. Henry on the, on Zoom. And I just want to give REC a shout out because several weeks ago, we had just this crazy locust storm that came through Washington and Castleton, knocked a ton of power out. And REC was really on it and it took me several days to get power back. It took my neighbor, I think, six days?
Yep.
Yeah, the burses and, I mean, they had a big tree come down and it was just kind of a mess. But I mean, it came screaming through there. And so they were incredibly responsive as they always are, so I didn't want to forget to thank them. Thank you.
Good job.
And Jeff, if you need, if you need help with us finding you a house in Rappahannock County, let us know because we know you have a hankering to move here and we would love to have you here.
It would just make it easier for you.
As long as we have your phone number and your address.
Mr. Curry?
Mr. Whitson mentioned the flooding in Texas. And I just want to point out, that area that was so devastated near that camp was a regulated floodway. That is the same designation along the Thornton River, both branches of Thornton River. These are areas where you were not supposed to build. You were not supposed to make, do anything that might cause floodwater to back up. It's the most regulated. And I don't want to strike fear into people, but people get complacent. The flooding that we had not too many weeks ago was minor where the water came out of the banks of the Thornton. And, you know, it would take some modeling to understand, you know, what would, what would happen if we had 10 inches of rain in the right drainage area for the Thornton. They're both regulated floodways. It's important to understand.
That's why the Planning Commission is so mean sometimes.
Yeah.
Yes. Somebody had a chat.
For good reason. I don't see any, oh, that's probably Jeff.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Excellent. All right, I need a motion to go into closed meeting?
Motion to go.
Well, no, no, no.
Oh, you gotta read something?
You want to read it?
Yes, I'll read it. I move that the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors conduct a closed meeting in accordance, Section 2.2, 3711 of the Code of Virginia.
You don't have to leave until we're done voting.
For the purpose of, one, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. And consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual probable litigation where such a consultation on briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. The associated subject matter of the closed meeting will be county administrator's annual performance review pursuant to Section 15 of his employment agreement. And number two, case number CL 25000105-00. Dimitris, yeah, Dimitris Inez-Gwen, per se, at all county of Rappahannock.
And just to clarify, that's Section 2.2, 3711 A1 and 2.2, 3711 A7.
Have a motion to the second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're in closed session.